This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, June 18th. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast by eMedia on Charter Channel 193 and live streaming on their webpage easthamptonmedia.org. Councilors and participants in this meeting are gathering hybrid on the order extended until June 30th, 2027, allowing us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the public participating remotely to remain muted until recognized by the city council president. Also, for the members of the public, please remove your camera for the duration of the meeting unless you are participating in public speak time or the public hearing. Thank you. This meeting is now called to order. Mary Ann.
Peg Coniff.
Here.
Connie Denham.
Here.
Salem Derby.
Present.
Felicia Jazek.
Here.
JP Kuzinski.
Here.
Tom Peake.
Here.
Brad Riley.
Here.
Tamara Smith.
Here.
JT Terrell.
Here.
And now you can either take a moment of silence or join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will work toward it.
Okay, we don't have any minutes available for this meeting, so we will take care of those at our next meeting. And tonight is a little bit different because it seems we have a lot of people in the house, which I imagine some of you might want to speak. So what I'm going to do tonight is I'm going to open up public speak time, but we can only keep it open until 6:15. At 6:15 is a hard stop for us to go into our public hearing where we have unfortunate amount of stuff to deal with because the budget was delayed last meeting. So we have the city's budget that must be passed before June 30th, and we also have quite a few supplemental appropriations. So when that is finished, I will reopen public speak again. And when everybody has been able to speak, then we will, the first order of business after that will be to move the resolution. So buckle up. And also saying that, please, if you would like to address the council on anything other than our public hearings, which is the budget and appropriations, you may step to the podium. The only thing I ask, there's a couple things here. We're going to keep it to three minutes, and we are going to state our name and our address before we speak. We will address the council. And please, nobody in the audience, as much as you might want to really cheer people on or not cheer people on, to maintain decorum, we're going to ask you to hold your comments, to hold your emotions until you get to the podium, where you can be as free as you would like to say whatever you would like. So if you would like to speak, please step to the podium. Thank you. I did. Yep.
You ready?
We are ready. Just name and address for the record, and then continue.
My name is Reverend Dr. Chris Davies. My address is 229 Montgomery Road in Westfield, Massachusetts, and I have a family member in the East Hampton School. I am here as part of that and part because I'm the Executive Minister for Programs and Initiatives in the Southern New England Conference of the United Church of Christ, representing 570 local churches across the Connecticut, Massachusetts, and Rhode Island. The United Church of Christ has been firm on our commitment to transgender folk for years, and we intend to be clear and loud about that. I am here because of my faith, and I strongly affirm East Hampton as a city of safety for trans and gender nonconforming people. We are here because it matters to publicly affirm the safety of trans siblings and continue to build places of trans flourishing and joy, especially when this work will be so long. It matters. We need this hope. East Hampton can continue to be a city on a hill, a city of refuge for the most and multiply oppressed in this ongoing work. Because trans people are made in the image of the divine, holy and holy-made, just as they are sparkling beacons of creative gender joy. Because I believe this work is co-creating the world God has called us to build, one where people are free, have enough, and can flourish in community. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nathan Markey. I live at 37 Holyoke Street, Presing 3. I am also the Chair of the East Hampton Democratic City Committee. I am here to speak in full support of the resolution. I hope that all of the city councilors vote yes on this resolution. I did not, I do not have a prepared speech. I am not speaking on behalf of the committee, though there are many, many members of the committee there in favor of this resolution, and there was much discussion last night about it. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Margot Anderson in East Hampton. And so today I learned that my country hates my family. These words were posted on Blue Sky this morning about today's Supreme Court decision. And today especially, state and local civil rights protections matter in a time of encroaching hate and discrimination in Washington. Your actions tonight resonate far beyond this chamber and well beyond our town's borders. I have a job in New York City, but I and my family live here in part because this is a wonderful town in a wonderful state. My wife and I pay local and state taxes, and our kids are in the local public school system. We all gladly support local restaurants and businesses. However, the vindictive federal administration for us jeopardizes everything. It shouldn't fall to local governments to pass a civil rights ordinance, yet these are unusual times with an increasingly authoritarian federal government trying to consolidate power at the expense of the most vulnerable. And look, you stop authoritarians by stopping authoritarians. They are bullies, and we all know how to fight bullies. You stand up to them and do not give any ground. With great respect and admiration for the hard work this chamber does, I request you please consider voting yes on the trans city of safety resolution. Thank you.
Kathy Wizinski, Overlook Drive. I was reviewing the agenda this evening and unclear as to what the initials were for the resolution and needed to ask one of the city councilors. I'm going to guess that many of the citizens in this community also weren't sure what those initials stood for and therefore would not necessarily come to provide either support or a dissenting viewpoint on this resolution. I will ask that you either delay discussion of this resolution or continue discussion of this resolution to the next city council meeting so that people who might have a different point of view might be able to present that. Thank you.
My name is Eileen Royzmann, and I live at 17 Adams Street. It's a quirky old house divided into eight small to medium-sized apartments with comparatively low rents. The previous owner couldn't keep up with the building, but he kept the rent low. Then he sold it to Hurricane Properties, an investment company that owns many rentals in Western Mass. They have a mailing address in Charleston, South Carolina. Their property manager, the public face of the operation, is in Florida, where they own some luxury properties. Here in East Hampton, they are imposing enormous rent increases to be closer to what they consider to be market value. But investor market value isn't the same thing as fair market value. Hurricane Properties doesn't care about tenants as people with lives and ties to the community, so they don't care about being fair. The only thing they care about is maximizing profit. A testimonial on their website says, "I started off with a modest investment, but over time increased to $400,000." I would highly recommend this to someone who is looking to make a solid return on a passive investment. Passive investing means getting money without doing any work. Some hardworking people never see $400,000 their whole lives. In a letter to investors dated February 2024, they said, "We believe that to be successful with investing, you need to do the opposite of what the crowd is doing, and that oftentimes the best opportunities present themselves when everyone else is running scared. With that in mind, we pivoted to a new market where prices were affordable and charged forward, purchasing 33 apartment units in 2023. Because we bought our newer properties at a discount, we are still able to have strong cash flow despite higher costs. Also, unlike many real estate companies, we manage all our properties in-house and perform all our rehabs with our own team. This complete control over our operations allowed us to keep costs down and generate profits where the other real estate investors could not. We have also continued to aggressively raise rents to offset increased costs. We will continue to grow our portfolio in a safe and diversified manner for the decades to come with the goal of creating generational wealth for ourselves and our investors. They intend to own $30 million in property this year. None of this takes into consideration the people who make their homes in these buildings. To them, apartment units are commodities, and tenants are merely conduits for money. Tenants who don't pay are removed and replaced. Ironically, their messages on the tenant portal say, 'Thank you for choosing Hurricane Properties.'" Out of fear or due to extenuating circumstances, several of the tenants in our small building have agreed to the higher rent even though they can't really afford it. That doesn't make it acceptable. It just means Hurricane Properties is very good at bullying. They're about to try evicting the rest of us, but we're not going to back down. We have legal support, and we're going to keep standing up for the other tenants as well. None of this is good for community stability. This can't be what you want for East Hampton. A mechanism has to be put in place to ensure a balance between fair housing for tenants and fair business for landlords.
Thank you.
My name is Anne Stengel. I live at the same residence as Eileen, 17 Adams Street, that just got purchased by Hurricane Properties, where they just raised our rent by 30% with a 30-day notice. Either pay up or get out is basically what they told us. This has been my home for 13 years. I'm a teacher in this community. I teach at Polio Community College. Many of my students are from East Hampton. I ran into several of them at Cultural Chaos on Saturday. We had a great time. I've also been a veterinary technician in this community at the Florence Animal Clinic for 18 years, which has also been a family-run business. So I ask you, where are we supposed to get this 30% rent increase from? I can't go to the college. It's state-run. Am I going to go to the state government and say I need a 30% raise? Am I going to go to the Florence Animal Clinic, a family-owned business, and say I need a 30% raise? That's not going to happen. Where am I going to get this money from to stay in my community that has meant so much to me for the past 13 years? Thank you.
My name is Jessie Morrissey. I live on Apple Tree Lane. I've lived in East Hampton for 12 years. I'm a small business owner. I work at a local brewery, and I'm raising my kid, my two kids, here with my wife. I love this town. This is where I want to grow old. I'm also a transgender man. There is a real growing effort in this country to strip, strip rights away from people like me, from trans adults, trans kids, from our doctors, our teachers, our parents. Some people think that'll never happen in Massachusetts, and I hope they're right, but hope it's not a plan. You don't have to understand everything about gender identity to understand this. I just want to live. I want to raise my kids. I want to work. I want to be a good neighbor. That's all. This resolution tells families like mine that we are safe, that we belong, and that our town will stand by us when it matters. Please be kind. Please pass this resolution. Thank you.
My name is Molly Davis. I'm at 56 Ferry Street, and I'm an East Hampton resident. I'm reading this statement on behalf of Sebastian Barr, who is also an East Hampton resident. These are his words. My name is Sebastian Barr. I am a transgender man and have lived in East Hampton for four years. As our country grows scarier and more difficult to be trans, and I have taken solace that I live in an area that is generally very embracing of gender diversity. With the ongoing and worsening attacks, including today's Supreme Court decision and the Trump administration's stated and evidenced agenda against my community's rights, I am increasingly concerned that being anywhere in the U.S. is too dangerous. But I love living here. We own our home and have built and are expanding pollinator gardens. We frequent the shops and restaurants downtown. I lead a weekly group bike ride, and we have a wonderful community of neighbors. And my wife is expecting our first child later this year. We don't want to move. We want to continue building our lives and our family in East Hampton. But we need to be reassured that we will stay safe here. Please pass this resolution. I hate that we're here, but if we need our city council to affirm commitment, sorry, but we need our city council to affirm commitment to trans safety and commit that regardless of the direction the country takes. And regardless of the direction the country takes, our city's resources will not be spent harming my community or restricting our rights. Thank you.
Thank you. And I hate to do this, but let's have you be the last one for this, and then just remember where you are in line and when, if you can remember, if you can remember how many hours from now this takes, then just jump right back in where we left off, and we're going to have you be our last one for this moment.
Great. Thank you.
My name is Kat Nowitzki. I use she/her pronouns, and I am a proud resident of East Hampton, a place that I love very much, at 58 Pleasant Street. I love the spirit of East Hampton. We are hardworking, determined, creative, quirky in the best way, and above all, we are a community that cares about one another. About a decade ago, I started my work as an advocate for trans and non-binary students in educational settings, creative communities, and spiritual groups to support the process of making spaces safer for trans community members. In my policy and community work, I've often been faced with resistance to making institutional changes that would better serve trans folks. Frequently, I heard the response, "There are not enough trans people for us to put in the effort to make the changes." And my answer to that has always been, if a policy change can save and protect even one life, that is more than enough that to put the effort into making a change. Everyone in East Hampton deserves to feel that the message on our downtown street lamps that state now "You belong" applies to them too. I urge city council to please vote yes on naming East Hampton a sanctuary city for trans and gender diverse communities. Let's stand together during this time when the White House is trying to frighten people away from living their values and boldly state that, no, this is our value, that we do not side with hate, and fear is not who we are. Our city is a place where trans folks are worthy of feeling like they belong, that they can thrive and live long and fulfilling lives. Trans people are the targets of so much violence and hate, and even today, the Supreme Court upheld withdrawal of lifesaving gender-affirming care. But we in East Hampton believe in standing by our neighbors. I urge you to vote with the values of East Hampton citizens in mind. Please support our trans community members so that they may be able to continue to contribute to making East Hampton such an outstanding place to live, where everyone can feel that they belong and feel safe enough to learn, live, work, and just live without fear of their safety on a daily basis. Please use your vote today to bravely state that we are a sanctuary city for trans people because we believe in everyone's right to live safely, to be a part of the community, and to feel that they belong in East Hampton because this is who we are. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And so with that, we're going to open the public hearing, and what we'll do is we'll queue back up as soon as we close the public hearing. So I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So do.
So if we have a motion in a second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Public hearing is open. Counsel Peake.
Thank you, Mr. President. For everyone here, I'm so sorry. This is going to take a while. Okay, so let's get to it. So just, just to overview what we are going to discuss tonight, this related to finance, we have our municipal budget that we need to pass. We need to pass it tonight. If we don't pass it, we're in a lot of trouble because it's the end of the fiscal year. After that, we have 17 appropriations that we also need to approve. So if anyone's wanting to keep track, that's what we've got. A budget, which has 10 parts, and then 17 appropriations. So let's start with the budget. The budget was, we continued this hearing at the last meeting to give some time to see whether some negotiations could work out in a way that would potentially resolve some matters of contention. I have not received any update about that. Has anybody else received? No?
Counsel. The 11th meeting did not occur, and the 18th, I did, I believe, did occur, but I have no updates on the progress of that meeting or whether we were able to come to, or any change from the positions that we stood at come two weeks ago. If that helps you at all.
Sure, it does.
What it tells me is there hasn't been the satisfactory resolution that we had hoped for.
Okay. Mayor, do you, do you have any comment on this?
The counselor is correct in that the 11th, meeting on the 11th could not happen for undue circumstances. Meeting happened this afternoon, and we will be having another meeting on June 25th, I believe, or accepting proposals. Again, second session of impact bargaining. We expect at least a third, and that's where we are now.
Okay. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
What that, my, so my immediate reaction to this, although I'm willing to be talked out of this if somebody else has a really different way of looking at it, is that at this point, any remedy to the, the concerns that have been placed forward by Counselor Denham and others would have to come through in the form of an appropriation next year if the parties come to the, come to a conclusion that works for everyone because this needs to get passed, and I, I'm not, like, again, if, I would love for the parties involved to come to a conclusion that everyone's happy with and come forward, and if that's what happens, like, I feel very comfortable saying that as Finance Chair, I would most likely support any appropriation to help with that situation, but ultimately, that is not something that is currently under our control, and before this night's over, we need to pass a budget. So I, with that being said, am ready to move forward with the budget as it's been presented, unless, I mean, when we go through, I guess, any, anyone who wants, if there's anybody who has any amendments that they would want to suggest, they would suggest them during that motion.
During the, the motion of the section.
Of the section. That was my understanding as well.
Counselor Denham.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. The budget has to be passed before June 30th, correct? So in theory, there could be, this council could have an emergency meeting after tonight, correct?
In theory, yes.
Yes.
Counselor Coniff.
And also, and maybe this is not the time to speak to it, but it, it almost doesn't matter what the union comes up with. We cannot increase the budget. So what will happen either way is if they approve it, after we approve the budget, an appropriation will be made to supplement the income that those individuals may or may not win. If it's after the 30th, same thing, an appropriation will happen. There is nothing that will happen during those union negotiations that we have any control over. All we can do is reduce the budget, not increase it. So I find that whole conversation moot to what we're talking about tonight.
That's a good point, Counselor Coniff.
Thank you.
And I think that it's clear that the sentiment of at least a few members of the council is relatively clear on this issue, so I don't think that if we did decide to hold it up and have a special meeting, that it would solidify that position any further. Other, I think that position is no, I think. And so I agree that it would be a moot point to do that. Any other thoughts on this before we move into the sections? Counselor Kuzinski.
Just as a general matter with regard to amendments, I think it's fine to say that the council can't increase the budget. We can't. That's the state law. We cannot change, we cannot increase the budget. We can make our sentiments be known, however, through any amendment to the existing budget to make it very clear that we are not happy with certain matters, that we're not happy with the way the budget has been presented. We really have very little options, and frankly, I for one am frankly very frustrated and dissatisfied with being in a position where we can't express those feelings clearly. So it is very likely I will be making amendments to the budget. And its intent, I'll be very clear with, is to make clear that we are dissatisfied with the negotiation process between the executive and the council with regard to certain issues. The executive can make their decisions and will submit whatever budget they want. If we're dissatisfied, we can take some action, and the only action we can take is to delay through the 30th or make amendments.
Counselor.
Yeah, I guess, I hear what Counselor Kuzinski is saying, and obviously every single, every counselor here has every right to propose any number of amendments. Without straying too much from the topic at hand, I would just say that ultimately there is, there is recourse that we do have beyond that. It's just not recourse that happens this fiscal year, right? Because we could amend our charter, right? If there's, if there's a feeling that actually we, the council wants to have more power in the budget-making process, we could propose a charter amendment and bring it to the people and make our case. And at this point, I just, I want to throw that out there because we, it seems like we get stuck in this sort of brinksmanship every year or two, and at some point, it feels kind of exhausting. And I don't know whether the voters would approve or would support that. I mean, I'd need to think about whether I support it, but ultimately, I do think that if this is something that we need, that this is something that there, there's a conversation about this that starts every year around May and ends every year around the end of June about whether or not, like, and it's like, well, this is crazy, and then we go and we don't do anything about it, and we don't make any attempt to change the system, and then we're stuck with the same system next year. So I just want to, I don't want to get too far into that. We should talk about what's on the agenda, but just since this happens every time, I just want to remind people, like, this is a system that exists because the voters voted on it being the system, and I don't like elements of it, and I'm sure that a lot of other people don't, but it, it's what we're stuck with until someone changes it.
I agree. I think both of those are good points. I think that Counselor Kuzinski, you're right. We have, like, as of now, the only recourse we have is, the only option we have is to cut, no other option. Counselor Peake, that I think is an interesting, long-term solution potentially. I do think it might make sense for, you know, time-wise, for us to get into, and if people do have amendments, to bring those per section and continue to move forward because we could get stuck in a circular spiral here, which I don't necessarily think is the best course of action.
I understand. I'm ready whenever everyone else is.
Okay.
Okay. So Section 1 is general government. I'm just going to be making these motions and, all right. I move the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,563,535.86 for the various departments listed under Section 1 General Government, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and City Council Finance Committee. Water, sewer, enterprise, $529,086.33. Parking funds, $7,500. Overlay, $400,000.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any further discussion in general government? Counselor Kuzinski.
I move to amend the motion and substitute it with the following motion. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $3,488,535.86 for the various departments listed under Section 1 General Government, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report amended city attorney professional services budget reduced by $75,000. services budget reduced by seventy-five thousand dollars. With the following amounts to be transferred as recommended, uh, by the mayor and the council, city council finance sub, uh, committee, water and sewer enterprise, five hundred and twenty-nine oh eighty-six thirty-three, parking fund, seventy-five hundred, overlay, four hundred thousand dollars. Is there a second?
Still moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the original, um, motion. Uh, is there any discussion on the amendment? Councillor.
I'll speak to it. Oh, well.
Councillor Kuzinski.
I, I just wanted to say, the purpose here is that the budgeted amount had been eighty-five thousand dollars for, uh, prof-, for professional legal services. That figure, if we reduce it, it's the one section of the budget that gives us the flexibility to reduce something where the mayor can come back to the council to make requests for future increases, but it's a matter of negotiation between the mayor and the council. It gives the council the authority over this line item as opposed to the mayor having the authority over the line item. It gives flexibility. Right now, I feel as if the council in general, before we had a small, tiny, little budget for legal services, goes and is always asking the mayor for permission to, can we look, you know, look into this, can we look into that? And if there happens to be a disagreement between the executive and the council, there's very little flexibility for the council to have any ability to have professional services. I think those are the kinds of issues that can be helped by making this kind of a reduction in the city's budget.
Okay. Councillor Peak.
Uh, yeah, respectfully, I, I, I don't think I'll be voting for this. I, um, I understand the intent behind it and I think that there's something respectable be, behind that, but as finance chair, the idea of having to be constantly coming for appropriations, the legal work that's necessary for, uh, all sorts of things in the city to move forward, while maybe that does create some leverage in the balance of powers question, I think it, uh, could potentially create a headache, uh, for the finance committee. Um, and beyond that, I, it's, just goes against my general philosophy on these things, which is that we should budget, we should av-, avoid, we, I, I like that we've actually been moving away from budgeting way less than we need, than we know we need for these things and so while I understand the sentiment behind it and there's elements of it that I'm sympathetic to, I don't think I can get on board with this.
Okay, councillor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to be really honest, I'm getting really frustrated with council making decisions based on whether, whether or not they're convenienced or not. There are eight people right now who are being impacted by this cut and their lives are being inconvenienced. This is what we were elected for. People are hardworking, people are committed to this community, people are our neighbors, people are our constituents and they quite frankly should not be treated this way. This is ridiculous. This whole thing is about twenty-four thousand dollars in a budget of sixty-one thousand dol-, or sixty-one million. This is absurd. Like, I don't understand why people are being treated this way and this is our responsibility to stick up for them. I do not understand when the union, when labor became a problem for this city and those positions, as we have learned, in this packet. The council on aging now has cut back their hours. When seniors become a problem for this city that we were not committed to them? Someone in the health department over this situation has now left their position. Did you not hear people today talking about the rent raises that they're dealing with? Now there's no one in the health department who's, who's willing to stand up and speak for them. When did poor people in a working-class city become a problem for us? Like, I'm sorry, I am not inconvenienced by this and in fact, I will come back in a week and speak on this again. The person who should be inconvenienced is the person who's put this forward. People are suffering in this community over this. People are having their services cut because of this for nothing. There was in fact a mistake in the budget of over sixty-four, or sixty-four thousand dollars and that could easily have been, oops, that was a mistake, you know what? We care about our employees and we're going to put that money to that, but instead, we're going to sit here and we're going to spend hours dinking around, having a conversation which twenty-four thousand dollars would, would address. These are people's lives, this is people's income and this is something that people counted on. You don't just in the last minute or last couple of months say, sorry, you're down. One person is down twelve thousand dollars, another person is between five and seven thousand dollars. That is a huge inconvenience and I'm not inconvenient to speak up for them.
Any other thoughts? If you wouldn't mind, audience, just, so we can get through this, just, we'll try to keep it, um, with some decorum here. Um, does any other councillors have any comments on the amendment? Seeing, uh, none, I think that councillor Denham, I, I appreciate your, um, your passion around this. I, I think it's unfortunate that we don't have the tools, uh, to, to do what I think a lot of us want to do, which is, and which is part of your impassioned plea is to help some of these people that, um, are going to be impacted potentially by these. I just, it's unfortunate that we, in this position as city councillors, are not empowered to be able to do that. I think that is, you know, under our current form of government with the mayor strong, um, is, is the executive branch's, um, purview and it's, as frustrating as it is, it's, you know, that's, that's the structure and, um, so I understand, um, but I, I think that as we move forward, I'm, I'm happy to, um, to support the amendment just to show that, you know, I support this, the position of trying to support our employees, but I also know that it is, um, it's symbolic. We don't, we don't have the, the purview to, to do, to change the budget in the positive. All we can do is take a stand and it doesn't matter whether we do or not, it's, it's the executive's decision. Um, so I think that, uh, if, unless anybody else has something, I'll be, I'll, yep, go ahead.
I just wanted to elaborate that in terms of there being an inconvenience, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry if there's an inconvenience, that's what we're hired to do. I agree with councillor Denham. If the mayor needed to come back and ask for seventy-five thousand dollars on July first, that would be the mayor's prerogative to do that. So this isn't an attempt to make more work for the finance subcommittee, this is an expression of expressing an opinion in really one of the only few ways we have to express the opinion here and make the council's will truly be known, other than we say nice things.
Yep. Um, and I think probably for this one, let's, let's do, uh, are you prepared to do a roll call? Let's do a roll call for this one and then hopefully we'll be able to do just voice votes for, and this is for the amendment to the original motion.
A point awarded, sorry.
Yep.
Does the, does the public speak after each piece before we vote or does that have to come at the end? So it's a public hearing, so.
Well, after, if, if we amend it, then the public would have an opportunity to speak after the amendment.
Okay, I just want to be clear with the processes.
Generally. Because that way they'll know what they're speaking to. Councillor Snell.
This has nothing to do with that, but the name tags are in the wrong position.
Thanks for that.
That's mine.
Don't trade. But if you want me to be top peak, I'm happy.
You don't want to be top.
Mary Ann. And this is on the amendment to the original motion.
Peg Connaught.
Oh, sure. Um, you know, I mean, in theory, I completely agree, I, I get it. I'm going to vote no.
Okay.
Connie Denham.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Felicia Jatsik.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
No.
Brad Riley.
No.
Tamara Smith.
Aye.
JT Terrell.
Aye.
Three noes.
Okay, so.
To seven, to six.
Amendment passes?
Yeah.
Okay, so now this is back to the amended motion.
Yes.
Um, and, uh, I think what we probably need to do is, and this is my, this actually, when, do we need to take, JP, that's a question for you, do we need to take the second off of the amended motion and table it to get input from the public and then re-put the amendment back on the floor?
I would say no, I would say we pass the amendment. That's on the floor, we have the, the amendment, which is now the, the new motion.
The new motion, but it's, the new motion was in effect, so.
Well, the motion is on the floor.
So, and we can't have a motion on the floor and have the public speak to it, so.
Well, when would we have the public speak, before they, before?
Well, that's, that's, that was the conundrum, so what I'd like to do is I'd like to get, um, to open it to, for the public speak.
And you want to be clear.
And I want to make sure that we don't have a motion on the floor. So what I'm saying is, can we take the amended motion off, have anybody that's interested in speaking to it and then bring the amended motion back, which I think is probably the smartest way to do it.
I would say we, in the firing line, I would do it.
Okay, um, so I, I'm going to request that the amended motion, um, that we will be voting on be, uh, taken off the floor, so whoever seconded the original one, which, I don't remember.
Well, actually, it should be the, the motion be taken off, not the.
The, yeah, the motion to be taken off. So, and then we'll bring it back. So do we have amended, who, um, seconded the first one?
Who seconded the first one?
Oh, Peg.
Peg. So can you just rescind your second for now?
Uh, sure.
Okay, and then.
I'll rescind my motion.
Okay, so, um, would anybody like to speak to, uh, general government? Okay, again, just state your name and address for the record.
Kathie Wizinski, Overlook Drive. I wanted to point out once again some discrepancies in salaries and I appreciate Connie Denham's advocacy for our, our staff. I think it's really important. I did want to point out for all the citizens, a discrepancy in the clerical salaries. Um, we have, um, two longtime, um, clerical staff that have worked in public safety and I'm sure other long-term clerical staff that have worked here for years, um, some of them decades, that are, um, making significantly less than someone who's been working here far less time. It's really inappropriate for a thirty thousand dollar salary jump in the last five years for a, a clerical staff person that works less than forty hours. Um, and this year, there's a proposed increase of another three thousand dollars while other staff are losing hours, other secretarial staff. Um, I'm not exactly sure why we need a ninety-two thousand dollar a year, um, executive assistant in the mayor's office. Um, it's really inappropriate for someone to be making that level of salary that works less than forty hours a week and when we have staff, secretarial staff that have worked here for more than two decades that are making thirty thousand dollars less. Um, I think it's really inappropriate and I'm disturbed that this wasn't caught, caught by the council when it was first proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak to general government?
Carolyn Cushing, Main Street, Precinct Four. I'm not exactly sure this is the right time to talk, but I, I think it fits. I'm, all the ins and outs here. Um, uh, the, my understanding of this, some workers, eight people, their salary, their time being cut by an hour or two hours, resulting in this loss of income that is not insignificant in a time when people's costs are rising and I don't have a solution for you, but there does seem, you do have until the end of the month and these workers who serve us, how are they getting the message that their work isn't valued? You know, there's some clerical error or bad planning or something that's been known about for a while and it's just unaddressed. Um, and this will impact our services in the Department of Health, we have lost someone already in a time when the federal funding is losing and we're going to be facing more problems, the council on aging, funding for elders being cut, who's going to support them? I, um, I, I, the idea of like, the budget isn't voted on tonight, something happens and you come back later, is that possible? I don't know and, you know, maybe there needs to be a long-term fix for this, but I hope we figure out a way to support the people who work for us in the city and, and we can be creative sometimes, I've seen you all be creative with different things, so thank you.
Speaking to general government.
Hi. Mary Ann Serra, three fifty-nine Main Street. So I confess that I don't know a lot about what's happening and why these employees are having their hours cut. I wish I did know more, but what I do know is that this is not the moment in time in history and in our country to be reducing people's hours. Our economy is actually in crisis, um, despite any, any, um, hype to the contrary and it's also a time where we're really called on to put people first and to value people first and value their ability to support their families first. And so as I understand it, the council doesn't have much say over the budget. I don't know if it's even appropriate to say, can you change this? Because my understanding is, is that you cannot. But I would say that what would be really important is to, I mean, we've had these discussions. I remember the last budget discussion, maybe it was the one before, about, um, bilingual services and support for our students. I don't see the difference between the necessity of supporting our students and necessity of supporting their parents and the people who work in, for this city and the people who provide all kinds of services for us and I just think that that should be first. You know, I mean, I saw some item that said we have to fix the deficit in the cannabis budget. Good lord, pot over employees? How could that possibly be? But as I say, my understanding of this is really random, but what I know is I want our city's employees to be safe in every way, including economically. Thank you.
Okay, uh, anybody else? And if you're online, you can always just, uh, raise your virtual hand, but I'll just kind of take people as they come.
Good evening, city council and members of the public. Uh, I am the community social worker here in the health department and as you have all heard, I did resign this week. Um, I just want to speak about, about two months ago, we got an email that said that our union workers, sorry, who were working more than thirty-four hours a week would be adjusted to thirty-four and I reached out to the union when I got this email and they weren't aware of this decision. There's actually a paragraph in our union contract that explicitly states that in the event of a reduction, the city has to provide notice to the union and an opportunity to bargain over the impact of said reductions. So the discussions and the negotiations with our union were actually a reaction to union members like myself reaching out and bringing up these concerns. The negotiations in our contract were not considered proactively ahead of time and I think this is ultimately why this is all still unresolved and coming down to the last second, because the process was not carried out the way that it's supposed to be. because the process was not carried out the way that it's supposed to be. The piece of this that I really wanna highlight and hope will be handled differently if this situation should present itself in the future, is the consideration and respect given to the impacted employees. At the May twelfth Finance Committee meeting, when budget discussions first started, councilors inquired with city leadership about our thirty-four hour reduction, and their response on the city's end was that this is targeted to ask me members, because the union has administrative staff who are primarily thirty-four hours anyway, and this is just getting everyone in line. Councilors also inquired if the impacted staff were originally hired at thirty-four hours, and their response from city leadership was yes, most people, and that this only impacts about four or five people. It was not clear during that meeting who the impacted employees were. We were not mentioned by our names and our roles, and it took a lot of collaboration to determine who the actual group is that this will impact, and the correct total number of employees is actually six of us. If union employees are gonna lose hours and wages, the details should have been clearly stated and known from the beginning. This was discussed as a casual, no-big-deal matter. The six employees involved are dedicated, hard-working people who range from thirty-five to forty hours a week, from the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Public Health Department, IT, and our senior center. Many of us often work extra regardless of our thirty-five to forty hours because of the demands of our jobs, and this process and the discussions that have taken place about us have felt incredibly disrespectful and dismissive. I would like to say a big thank you to Councilor Denham for her advocacy and for being a champion of equity for employees and residents. When you have employees receiving significant raises above and beyond step raises on one hand, and you have employees receiving cuts to their hours and loss of income on the other, it is a hard hit, and your support is greatly appreciated. Thank you all for your time and the work you do for this community.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, see none, we can put the amended motion back on the table?
Councilor Kuzinski, do you have the amended numbers?
Uh, okay.
So, the amended number then would be, uh, I move that the city vote to, uh, raise and appropriate the sum of three million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-six cents from the various departments, for the various departments listed under Section One, General Government. And the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, uh, amended, uh, to include, uh, have the city attorney professional service budget reduced by seventy-five thousand, uh, with, with, uh, following amounts to be transferred as recommended, uh, by the mayor and, uh, City Council Finance Committee. Uh, water sewer enterprise, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eighty-six dollars and thirty-three cents. Parking fund, seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Overlay, four hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Uh, any further discussion on the amended motion? Councilor Kuzinski.
I just wanted to point out a general issue that if there was to be a delay, uh, everyone that has spoken to this is correct, June thirtieth is, is the last day for budget to be passed. If there's a will of the council to move forward tonight, then we vote on this, on this motion. Uh, just wanted to make sure, in case there was any further thoughts or discussion on that matter. That being said, we could be sometime next week, should that be the will. In the absence of that, uh, I'm not sure there were any conclusions that would lead to satisfaction for those who would be concerned about the matters that we've discussed. So, that being said, I.
Councilor Denham, is that your hand? I'm prepared to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, well, I just, wanna have a clarifying question, and then I have a comment.
Okay.
So, one, can we make a motion now to do that, or is it because this motion has already happened?
Um, now to do, to, to do what?
That's a very good question.
Yeah.
Um, to, uh, to move it to next week.
Right. I, we, we could, we could take the motion and the second off the table, or we could vote this section and stop there. We could stop after any section.
Um, Councilor.
And, and, and go into a continuation of the hearing.
Before I answer that, 'cause I do have an answer, Councilor, did you wanna weigh in real quick?
Why don't you have your answer?
Um, so, if, if we were going to delay the vote again, that means we'd have to hold a special meeting, which means, um, that would be next week. It sounds like the, the meetings, the union meetings would be Wednesday, so it would have to be after Wednesday. Um, and I'm, I'm personally not going to be available for that, so, and I don't know with such short notice if other councilors will be available. So it is taking a risk of not having a, a majority, um, you know, unless we checked in with everybody to see if we would have the appropriate number of people. I mean, I don't, again, I, I don't necessarily believe that delaying the budget will do anything. Um, I think amending the budget, um, which we, which is the motion that's on the table right now, would be the first time in my tenure that that would have happened. I, I, uh, I, Councilor Kuzinski, has this?
Nothing like thi, noth, nothing of this magnitude.
So, in the last twenty-two years, this has never happened.
Not, I'm just.
So this is not insignificant.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I think it's a, a significant statement, um, and I think it makes the, it's very clear where, where we, um, fall down on this issue.
Hmm.
Um, so, I, I think it, you know, what it would be is if, if someone decided that we wanted to try to hold a special meeting next week, knowing that I would not be available, um, that it would fall to Councilor Kuzinski, someone would have to request for this motion to be taken off the table. It would, and we'd also, it would make sense to check in to make sure other people wouldn't, would be available for it. So, um, you know, that would be, Councilor Coniff.
Oh, you had a part two to your question, sorry.
I can have a part two. But I'm happy to make that statement after this clarification is clear.
Um, for financial matters, and maybe this is a Marian question. Do we need two-thirds instead of a simple majority for the budget on financial issues? I thought we needed two-thirds, but I could be off on that. I just wanted to throw that out there. Anyone know?
Hadle said for certain ones, like the stabilization.
We need two-thirds, but not for the budget.
Not for the budget.
Okay. Number two, two, and then we'll go to you, 'cause you have much more feelings about this. Um, if we delayed this, what, and I mean this with all sincerity, I'm not trying to be a jerk about it. What are we gaining by waiting a week? We still can't add to the budget, and if the union says you can have the money, the mayor will have to do an appropriation legally, 'cause the union has now said you have to pay them. I just don't know what our role would be for that. Either way, an appropriation has to happen, and we can't increase the budget. So I feel like we'd be in the same place we are today, voting on the same numbers, and then the mayor would have to, de facto, do an appropriation to pay whatever the union deems that they need to have. So I, I'm a little concerned about, if we're just gonna be spinning on this for another week, I'm not, I have no appetite for that.
Yeah.
Um, Councilor Peak?
Yeah, um, sort of in line with what Councilor Coniff says. It's not uncommon for this city to pass a budget with union bargaining ongoing. It's happened a number of times that we've budgeted for a certain amount of money, and then the city has reached some understanding or agreement with, uh, one of our unions, and as a result of that, appropriated money to make up whatever the difference will be for the remainder of the fiscal year, and then in subsequent budgets, uh, it's put the, you know, appropriate numbers put forward. That happens virtually every year. In fact, one of the reasons we have a large appropriation for, uh, the school department that we're going to talk, be talking about later is because of precisely that reason. We ended last fiscal year where there were ongoing negotiations with the teachers' union. So, to me, there's, I, 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 I think I, I'm agreeing with, with Councilor Coniff here. I, uh, I, I don't, given that we don't have a lever to force the mayor's hand on this, I think that what we have to do is wait for this, this bargaining to play out, and in the case that, I, I hope there's a favorable conclusion, then we can be there to make whatever corrections we need to going forward. But I don't see how delaying these hearings further are going to make that, um, are, are, are going to, to, to change the, the, the material situation that we're dealing with here, uh, with this whole thing.
Um, Councilor Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, I, I was pretty clear at our last meeting, um, that I was coming to this meeting tonight to vote on the budget. Um, I'm very firm in that. Um, as other councilors have pointed out, there are constitutional affordances that are not at play for us, uh, to resolve this issue. Can't change that. It's not gonna happen. Um, if we could, I would do it right now. In a heartbeat, I would do it right now. Twenty-six thousand dollars, to me, is nothing compared to the entire city's budget. Um, but that's not up to me. It's up to the mayor, who is sitting over there, um, underneath the, uh, the sign there next to the door, behind the podium. No, I, no, and, and the reason why I'm doing this is because what we can do symbolically is we can tell the mayor, who is in the room with us right now, I don't care what it takes, make sure that this gets done, and bring us the twenty-six thousand dollars at the earliest convenience, and we will say yes. That's what I can do within my constitutional affordances, is I can apply pressure with all of the people in this room to tell the mayor to just get the job done. With that being said, I've had conversations with the mayor about this topic. It needs to play out as it needs to play out. She's not, she's not out to hurt the employees. This is just a contentious situation. Um, I don't know of any union negotiation where everybody walks in and doesn't come out with at least one lump on their head, right? This is a, it's, it's the, it's the most progressive and blue-collar form of activism that we have within the United States. Um, and that's okay. It's okay for it to be that way. Um, but we can't do anything other than symbolic gestures, and, and that's just the way that our constitution is written. So, please, Mayor, I ask you, do, do more good work with the unions, get this taken care of, and just as soon as you bring an appropriation forward, I know that I will pass it, and I know that everybody else on here would pass it as well. I mean, what we're talking about is such a small amount, we just don't have control over it right now. So, um, I know that she will uphold her end of the bargain, and I know that we will too. Um, so with that being said, I, I hate to be the stickler, but I'm, I'm not coming back for a, a special session. I was very clear at our last meeting, the role of a city councillor in local government is to pass the budget on time, responsibly, exactly as we're supposed to, which is what we're here to do tonight. Um, so, if we are talking about a supermajority of votes, then there's at least two down. Um, so we've got seven out of, uh, nine people that will be here at the special session, so, thank you.
Any other thoughts? And we, and we do have, um, a motion on the table, so, uh, Councilor Denham.
Yeah, so, I would support moving it, but if I, there's not the votes to be able to do that, or the support to be able to do that, there's obviously nothing that can be done. In terms of the motion, right, I will be supporting that, uh, in part, because, no disrespect to our, uh, uh, department heads, I think that they have all earned a raise, but the total amount of the department heads raises amounts to twenty-seven thousand dollars. And the cut to the seven AFSME is, I think, around twenty-four thousand dollars, as well as the other two department heads who had their hours reduced, where others didn't. Now, that is a transfer of wealth from our lowest-paid employees to our highest-paid employees, and that is unacceptable. Whether or not this is a symbol, symbolic or not, it's unacceptable. And actually, I will be presenting changes to the charter in order to be able to address this matter.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Denham. Uh, and if there's no, uh, Councilor Kuzinski, do you have something further you wanted to add before we vote?
Just as a specific to put on the table, other things in the general government budget that I think should give us all pause, and that was the mayoral department. Uh, in, within the department, there was a clerical section that calls, calls for a, a, a mayoral assistant who will make more money in the coming fiscal year than the mayor, if I'm not mistaken. Ninety-two thousand dollar, a thousand dollars and change versus a mayoral salary of ninety thousand. I think we have a problem there. I did not wanna bring back an amendment on that matter, because I don't think it's fair to change that person's salary necessarily without the full support of the council, but I did wanna put that on the table, that I'm not happy with that kind, and fought that years ago, that it developed, and it's here, it's here. I will, that just should give us pause to think.
Okay, I saw Councilor Peak and then Councilor Riley.
Yeah, um, I don't wanna discuss this too far, but I just wanna say that the reason that person's salary is the way it is is because this council voted to put that person in a pay grade that has those steps, right? And we all had that discussion, and I was on ordinance at the time, I was in those meetings. I remember ordinance voting on that unanimously. I'm pretty sure I remember the council voting on it unanimously, although I might be mistaken. So that's the way it is. These things, it's not like we sit around in budget season every year and we say, oh, well, what should this person's salary be this year? What should this person's salary be? We, we, that person holds a position that was created because there was a sense that their scope of work exceeded what the jo, what their current job description was, so we moved to a different, new position in a new pay grade, and that's what that pay grade with those step increases leads to. So that's, that's a consequence, and this, this happened over the course of a couple votes, but most of you were at the table with me when that happened. So to hem and haw about that now, as if that's a surprise that came, you all voted for that, like, and, and I did too, because, you know what, like, there's actually a ton of difficult administrative stuff that goes on in the city. It made sense at the time, and it kinda still does make sense to me. Now, if you disagree with that, then, you know, fine, we're gonna have a change in leadership next year. We can talk about what sort of staffing levels that department needs. But to target a, a specific employee, their salary being, well, a, a position. A position held by a single employee, though. You know, when, when we all voted for that position to exist at the salary level that it does, uh, to me feels, uh, I mean, it, it feels like an inappropriate waste of time, is kind of where I am. But, um, and, and for, I did also note that it's seven oh seven. We are now forty-five minutes into the public hearing, and we have yet to pass the first of ten sections of the budget. So, I don't really wanna spend too much time, uh, going over the details of this one individual's salary. If people have a problem with that, they should have said so when we amended our ordinances to create that position.
And, and just to follow up on that, I think maybe if people are interested in that, the appropriate time that we can do that is at the transfer, when there's a transfer of power, uh, and someone new will be coming in to fill that position potentially. So, I think that would be a decent time to take a look at that. Councilor Riley?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna be very short and direct in these comments. Um, I have heard multiple times over the last, um, I don't know, probably four or five months or so, that with this employee in particular, being referred to as a secretary, or as an assistant, or that that person is not deserving of the salary that they are being paid. With that being said, last year, our entire economy almost completely crashed because we didn't have a functioning licensing board. And I worked with that employee, who is also the clerk of the licensing board, to put everything in place to make sure that not a single person in this community knew that everything was gonna come crashing down. We were gonna have businesses that were gonna be temporarily shuttered. Uh, Food Truck Fridays was not going to happen, Cultural Chaos was not going to happen. That's the stuff that is the lifeblood of our city. That's what brings the money in, that's what makes the things about East Hampton that everybody loves so much. And it was because of her working with me to make sure that that carried out the way that it was. And to put an extra, um, signature on that, counsel-
on that, Counselor Denham's spouse was one of those people that stepped up to make sure that that didn't come crashing down. So that was a five-alarm fire that she helped me put out so that way nobody had to deal with any of these issues. And that's just one example. The entire appointments process goes across that person's desk. So we have over 200 public administrators that do conservation, that work in Nashuaanic Pond, that take care of our cemeteries. Everything in between goes across her desk. So there are hundreds of people that network with her and get the city's business done every single day. That is deserving of ninety thousand dollars. She's not a secretary and she's not an assistant. She is an administrator of the city. And I, I take extreme offense of all the times that people degrade her as being merely an assistant to the mayor. It is hard work to run a city. And I know that politicians sometimes think that you can just have your ego or you can just have a popularity contest and you can run a city, and that's just not true. You need public administrators that know contracts inside and out, that know our strategic plans. That person knows all of those things. If you ask her a question, she knows the answer. So with respect, please respect her title and the work that she does. That's all.
And I'm just going to clarify before I call the vote, which I'm about to do.
Thank you.
So, you know, I, I think that this is passion, great. You know, I think, I know what Counselor Krasinski was talking about, which was a position, not a person. And I think that if, as a council, we think that that position needs to be adjusted with a new mayor coming in, there will be a time for that. And I, and I think that if, if there's will, then that's one of the things that we should do. And I will just leave it at that, but it was definitely not about the specific person that fills the job, who I think Counselor Riley gave an appropriate kind of response that they are valuable. So, that being said, all those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? General Government passes. Counselor Peak.
I'm hoping the next one we can do in less than forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
All right. So next up, we've got Public Safety. So I'm just going to make the motion and then we can discuss.
Well, let's, let's see if there's anybody else there. Maybe just say what's in it, that way we can open to the.
Yeah, we'll do that. That's, that's great. So Public Safety includes our police, our fire, our dispatch. And we have total appropriated nine million, ten thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents for that appropriation, most of which is to cover basically, on the staff side, it's mostly contractual, union raises, and then on the supply side, it's.
Inflation.
Inflation. There isn't a lot of, there, I don't think there's any new positions being added or anything like that. So, yeah, that's where we are.
So if there's anybody from the public that would like to make a statement on the Public Safety section of the budget, please step to the podium and say your name, address, and you have three minutes or less.
Hello, my name's Carl Prawl. I live at Six Golf Street. I run Underline Farm out on Fifteen Torrey. I don't know if this is the appropriate spot to speak. It's a little all over the place tonight, but I just wanted to take a moment for everyone to just picture East Hampton in twenty years. You know, if we make all the right choices, if we get all the right breaks, all the lucky breaks, what does our city look like? What does it sound like? What does it smell like? You know, the city budget and a resolution declare East Hampton a sanctuary city for trans people, two items that might not seem closely linked. But how do we offer sanctuary to somebody if we can't house them? I've been speaking to a lot of community members, sitting in on meetings, listening. Renters frustrated watching rent go up and up and up and up. Young families and old families losing a chance at their first home because out-of-town cash offers come in at the last moment. People are coming to East Hampton, whether we plan for it or not. They will need homes. We should plan for it. How do we give sanctuary to somebody if we can't feed them? The Globe reported just this week that a third of state households did not have enough food last month. A third of households in the state. SNAP eligibility is restricted. Hip benefits are cut. Everything comes in smaller packages and they charge more for it. Our community center is helping 5,000 families with weekly food parcels, along with breakfasts and lunches for 700 kids with school out who, without the help, would be going hungry. These are our neighbors going hungry for a lack of resources. We want to do more than offer lip service to the idea of sanctuary. We want East Hampton to be a place any human of any color, any creed, any gender can find peace, liberty, and their own pursuit of happiness. This is home. Does this budget do that? When we think of the East Hampton of the future, does this budget, and more importantly, the philosophy behind this budget, does it make all the right choices? I'm not here tonight to naysay or point to any line item. I'm not here asking the budget to be held up. I am here to ask the council and our future mayor, whoever that is, to start planning for the future, no matter what comes. We need to control more aspects of our lives. And should the worst come, as we see happening every day on the news, we need to be able to take care of our own and, and anyone seeking sanctuary. That means we stop outsourcing and selling off public assets. It is galling that we can't afford to build affordable or low-income housing in a timely manner, but we can give a hundred K to some investment capital banker to go beg Beacon Hill for more taxpayer money to build apartments and will then extract wealth from our poorest neighbors. That's a hundred K is exactly what our community center lost in federal funding this year. We're spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on police over time. That is the East Hampton Community Center's budget. We're not giving the community center one cent in this budget. Hundreds of thousands to lease vehicles, not one bus. If you want to stop environmental change, climate disaster, it's not investing in lithium batteries. It's not investing in EVs. It's investing in public transit. It's investing in local people. The city can and should build housing, lots of it. A surplus of housing till the rents come down. If we can't put in rent controls because Beacon Hill says we can't put in rent controls, we should flood the zone and build housing. Rents come down, property taxes come down. Lower taxes make it easier for everyone to stay in East Hampton, retire in East Hampton. We might have to create some jobs to build them, post some positions. The city can do it. We can do so much.
So you have three minutes. If you could just finish up your thought.
Whether it is utilities, internet, trash, public transit, schools, the library, the safety center, the city needs to consider all needs of our residents and those it would offer sanctuary to. We cannot plan on benefits trickling down as the political winds shift and means we have to budget for these reasons. If we get extra funding, great, we're overfunded. But if we don't, school bells will ring, the lights will turn on, trash will be picked up, food will be grown, doctors will be seen, and life will continue because we control them here in East Hampton. I want to leave you with a quote from Peskina Azareo. I probably mask her that name, but our city arts director. "If we don't protect it, it's not protected." Thank you.
In regards to the cost of living crisis that we're in and this very tight budget that we have.
Can you just say your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sam Hunter. I forget that I have to do that here. I live in Eight Mayor Street. And I'm also on the school committee. I'm not speaking on behalf of the school committee. I just wanted to let, let the council know and let everybody who's watching know if your family is struggling with food insecurity, as 50% of families in Hampshire County are currently, according to that Mass Live report. We are offering the Summer Eats program in our city this summer. So that's free school, free lunches Monday through Friday for anybody who is 18 and under. You don't have to be a East Hampton Public School student. You don't have to live in East Hampton. You don't have to show any proof of address or proof of need or anything. Just show up. It's at Mountain View School and at, and the high school. It's actually free breakfast and lunch. And it's for the. You gotta eat on premises. You can't take it to go. That is like our number one question. It's a USDA rule. Call them and they'll explain it to you, I guess. They won't. But, yeah. So if anybody's got kids and you're, you're having trouble making ends meet this summer, please come and have some of our food.
Thanks. And, and I think for maybe future reference, if we could tie our comments to the budget section would be really helpful. So we can hear comments on each section and meaningful feedback. And then again, there will be public speak that is just open once we finish this. So you can speak on whatever you would like. And I believe it is time to put a motion on the table.
Okay. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of nine million, ten thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents for the various departments listed under Section Two, Public Safety, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations as recommended by the mayor and City Council Finance Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion on the Public Safety section? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes?
No.
Okay, motion passes with one no from Counselor Denham. Okay, that makes us go to the next section.
All right. So Section Three is Schools. The amount is twenty-two million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars. It goes to the school. The school is a little bit different from the rest of our budget in that rather than sort of getting a specific line item budget, we send a lump sum to the school committee who has broad jurisdiction to use that as they see fit. So there's maybe a little bit less specifics in, in our discussion of that, but that's because we have a great school committee who does a good job.
That is true. And does anybody from the public have any comments about the school portion of the budget? And again, if you're online, you can just raise your virtual hand. If you're here, you can just come up. Okay, seeing none.
All right. I move the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-two million, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars for the various departments listed under Section Three, Schools, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations as recommended by the mayor and City Council Finance Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion on the schools budget? Counselor Denham.
Just to clarify, I won't be supporting any more of the budgets. I think that what has happened with the Six ASME and two department heads, I think it's a travesty. And I, in good faith to their commitment to this community, cannot support these. I think that as a, as a community, we could have easily solved this problem and we chose not to.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention or noes?
No.
One no. Okay, Counselor Peak.
Okay, so Section Four is Public Works. The amount is two million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and twelve cents. But a lot, about, oh, I don't know, about eight hundred thousand. That is coming from the various enterprise funds. So the funds that raise money when, when you pay your water sewer bill. So, yeah, anything on that?
Okay. Anybody from the public have any comments on Enterprise? Anybody online? Seeing none?
Okay. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two million, four hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventeen dollars and twelve cents for the various departments listed under Section Four, Public Works, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and City Council Finance Committee. Water Sewer Enterprise, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-one dollars, twenty-one cents. Sale of lots, seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Capital stabilization, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion on Public Works? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions?
No.
One no. Okay, Counselor Peak.
All right. The next is Human Services. The amount, sorry, Human Services, the Health Department, and a few other, those sorts of departments. The Veterans Department, those sorts of things. The amount is eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Anybody from the public have anything on Human Services? Okay, seeing none. I don't think anybody online. I don't see any virtual hands. Okay.
Okay. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents for the various departments listed under Section Five, Human Services, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and City Council Finance Committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Any further discussion on Human Services? Counselor Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to mention this earlier, but I decided to wait to this section. I know that, I don't know if Liz is still here. Is she still here? I just want to thank you for your words this evening. I'm incredibly heartbroken that you are leaving the city. I think that you, the work that you did was incredibly honorable to vulnerable populations in this community and in our schools. I know you worked with our veterans. I know you worked with the folks that are struggling with housing, and you never ever turned your back on them. And I'm sorry that we let you down. And I appreciate you, everything that you did for the city.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes?
No.
No.
Looks like we got two noes on that one. Okay, Counselor Peak.
Okay. Next up, we've got Culture and Cultural and Recreation. So this is Parks and Rec and our appropriation to the library. So, yeah, the amount is eight hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. And that's about it.
Okay. Anybody from the public have any comments about Cultural and Recreation section of the budget? Anybody online? Want to raise your hand? If not, Counselor Peak, I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars for the various departments listed under Section Six, Culture, Cultural and Recreation, and that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations as recommended by the mayor and City Council Finance Committee.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Culture and Recreation. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention or noes?
No.
One no. Okay, Counselor Peak.
All right. So the next section is Debt and Interest. Not a lot to be done here. We have to pay it or we get in trouble. It's five million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-three cents, which is kind of, and it, so three hundred and one thousand, that's coming from Water Sewer. We've got some debt exclusion in there. We've got some, the premium for the, debt exclusion premium for the Maple School. And we've got some tax rate stabilization, which is being appropriated here, which a hundred thousand dollars, which basically takes the amount that people would have to, like, the property owners would have to pay for the school and reduces it by a hundred thousand dollars so that we all pay a little tiny bit less. So that is what is in Debt and Interest.
Just point, point of, point of order. I think the items should be read, including the numbers.
I will read them when I make the motion.
My apologies. I, I was stepping ahead. I thought we were getting there.
No, no.
We might have an onslaught of people wanting to talk about Debt and Interest. So.
True.
So does anybody from the public would like to address Debt and Interest section of the budget? Anybody online? Anybody online? Okay, seeing none. Now, Councilor Peak, you can read all the numbers.
Okay, I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-three cents for the various departments listed under section seven, debt and interest. And that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred or raised as recommended by the mayor and city council finance committee. Water sewer enterprise, three hundred and one thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-one cents. Debt exclusion taxation to be reduced by reserves for amortization, three thousand, three hundred and ten dollars. Debt exclusion Maple School K through eight premium, eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-one cents. HVAC debt premium, zero dollars. Tax rate stabilization, a hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say, I don't think we have much of a choice here, folks.
We don't.
You borrow the money, you owe the money, you pay it. So I'll vote yes.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes?
No.
Got one no. Councilor Peak.
Okay, next up is section eight. It's called unclassified, but it's employee benefits. This section saw a big jump this year. And a lot of that came with the fact that the Hampshire Insurance Trust that we are part of had their reserves pretty badly eaten up as a result of some breakthrough new medications that have hit the market, that have helped a lot of people to lose some weight or help their diabetes, but are also quite expensive. And a lot of people in the Hampshire Insurance Trust have apparently used. So we are in a, that has, that's, that led to a very significant increase in the, in this item that was a little bit outside of our control. Yes, so then out of that, we have water sewer enterprise is paying for six hundred and fifty thousand of that. And we are moving four million dollars out of general stabilization to cover this with the idea being that, well, there's a couple of things here. I do think the four million is a kind of important number to talk about for a second. When we get our free cash certified, we can put some back into there. But there's also the city's new financial policies that is rolled out by the mayor are calling for us to generally keep lower levels of reserves than what we historically have done. And so the idea is to spend some of this down now to handle this situation. It is worth probably bringing it up since this is a big room. One of the consequences of this is that should we have a tough year, like we might not have as much reserves. But, you know, I think that there wasn't a ton of fat on this budget to trim. So I think that the idea is to do this now and, and hope that we're going to be in an okay spot next year.
Okay, so does anybody from the public like to address the unclassified or employee benefits section of the budget? Anybody online? Seeing none? Councilor Peak.
I move the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve million, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty-seven cents for the various departments listed under section eight, employee benefits. And that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and finance committee. Water sewer enterprise, six hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. General stabilization, four million dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I'm just going to make one statement because I think that it's an important statement to make. The, the idea that the trust fund was eaten up completely or health insurance costs have gone up so much because of one particular drug that was in full shortage during the last year is a red herring. I started to investigate it after I heard that statement made at the finance committee. And, and really, it's CEOs of health insurance companies making ridiculous amounts of money and shareholders getting ridiculous dividends because we are running our health insurance for profit, which is insane. And that is why we are paying so much more. It's not because people are getting medication that they need. So I just want to make sure that that's really clear. So I would take other comments too. Councilor Peak and then Councilor Dunn.
Noted, and of course, it's whatever expenses, whatever things cost, we could run this entire system in a better way. And we don't, so that's bad. The other thing I would just want to say is that when I talked about the financial policies, I neglected to mention that those financial policies, while there has been some misgivings about them locally based on our own traditions of handling these things, the mayor has assured us that they are sort of in line with what the Department of Local Services is advising. So it's not like this is a complete rogue action. This is sort of what's being suggested. Doesn't mean I don't have some anxiety about it, but I do like, I just want to note that because I worry that my previous comment perhaps did not accurately reflect that.
Understood. Councilor Dunn.
Yeah, I was just going to also make a comment about that. I think that it's unacceptable that we shame people based on their, their medical needs. So I think that the comments that were made during the finance meeting were completely unacceptable. The other thing I just want to continue to point out that the contributory retirement was over budgeted by over sixty-four thousand dollars, which would have solved this entire problem this evening.
Any other? I think just for clarification, the over budgeting, if, if that stays, it rolls over into, I believe, free cash at the end. So, okay, seeing no more. Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to make a comment really quick. For the benefits, I know we can't increase things, but I just want to make the statement that that's what I'm most worried about, both for our employees and for the people who live in our city. The great amount of cuts that are coming to a lot of benefits that people really depend on. And I know we're limited in what we can do here, but I agree that we need to fast forward and think about what's our, what's our fail-safe plan if that happens. Because if you're hearing here right now, if we're already serving five thousand meals a week at our community center, we might have to really think a lot of different things within the city. And just pointing it out there that I'm very aware that it's coming. And so when we look at taking four million from the budget, I have mixed feelings about it. I really like the movement that we've had in East Hampton under the mayor's leadership. I like a lot of the things that we've moved forward. And I've seen over the long run, a lot of momentum in building with our savings that we've had and what we have available now. And I guess I'm just pointing out that I also have trepidation about this. And my reason for having trepidation about this is we haven't talked about that next step yet. And I know we can't necessarily do that in the yearly budget, but it's coming and it's going to be brutal.
I have one comment.
Thank you. I am particularly moved that our city is able to provide health insurance to the employees. It's an unbelievably huge benefit for whatever illness or care you need, it's there. I'm pleased to be able to provide it. When I hear about CEO salaries and executive salaries and that's impact on the cost, frankly, I get sick. I get sick because we should have a system of care that takes care of everyone, not just those privileged to be employed, employed by the state or the municipality. But we need to provide those benefits while they're needed now. But I will protest this vote.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes?
No.
Looks like we got two. Councilor Peak.
All right. Next up, section nine, community preservation. It's eight hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred dollars. And this is the money we appropriate for the CPA, which has been in turn matched by the state money and can be used for affordable housing, recreation, conservation. A lot of really good, open space, yeah. A lot of really good things that would not necessarily find a lot of funds in a municipal budget without the CPA. So I happen to sit on that committee and it's probably the most feel-good thing that I get to do in local government. So I don't see any reason why we wouldn't vote for this.
Okay, does anybody from the public have any comments about the CPA section of the budget? Anybody online? Just come up or raise your hand. Seeing none? Councilor Peak, let's get a motion.
Okay, I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight hundred and eleven thousand, three hundred dollars for the various departments listed under section nine, community preservation. And that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the total amount to be raised and appropriated from the community preservation fund as recommended by the mayor and city council finance committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on CPA? Councilor Kuzinski.
I just think that this money is the best feel-good for the whole city. It is what we can do. It's what makes our city be vibrant when you see the expenditures that come out of these funds. I wish, on the other hand, that we were able to use it for some other purposes. We cannot. It's state law. It can only be used for the express purposes that Councilor Peak mentioned. I will vote in favor.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Is that unanimous? Councilor Dunn?
I said aye.
Oh, it was unanimous.
I like CPA.
Okay. Councilor Peak, bring us to the next one.
Section 10, enterprise. So enterprise is all of the expenditures related to water and sewer that come from the money raised from water and sewer bills. So.
Good. Anybody from the public like to address the water and sewer section, enterprise? Anybody online? Okay, seeing none. Councilor Peak.
I move that the city vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and sixty cents for the various departments listed under section 10, enterprise. And that the amounts listed in the mayor's printed report, unless amended, be considered specific appropriations with the following amounts to be transferred as recommended by the mayor and city council finance committee. Water sewer enterprise, three million, three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars and sixty cents.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Got one no. And I believe that's...
Just one more.
Just one more.
This is, I don't know.
Close to the end.
I don't know exactly how this finds its way in there, but we have a revolving fund cap.
That's right.
Which is related to the electric vehicle, or the electrical vehicle charging station and the bike share program. It's just a bunch of legalese that for some reason has to fit into the budget. So I don't think anyone, does anyone want to speak to this? No, okay.
If anybody does, please make your way up. If not, that's fine too.
I move the city council cap the DPW revolving fund spending for electric vehicle charging stations and the bike share programs at twenty thousand dollars for fiscal year 2026 as per Mass General Laws, chapter thirty, or forty-four, section fifty-three E and a half.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Any other? No? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes?
No.
We got a no. And that is the budget. Now we only have, what, seventeen?
Now we just have seventeen appropriations.
Seventeen, okay.
I am again, very sorry. Thank you, everybody, though. Okay, so this first one's pretty easy. It's a interdepartmental transfer of just under forty-five thousand dollars to and from the PEG access account. Basically, we have a franchise agreement with Spectrum. And as a result of that, when you pay your cable TV bill, if you have cable TV, a small surcharge on that goes to the city. The city then takes this money, but we have to take a vote every quarter to send that money along to East Hampton Media so that they can provide all the great services that they provide. So that's what this is.
Yep, anybody from the public like to talk about the PEG access account? Anybody online? Okay, seeing none. Councilor Peak.
All right, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, forty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and five cents to be transferred from PEG access account to be transferred to PEG access account. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to give approval to spend from the PEG access receipts reserved account for cable-related purposes consistent with the franchise agreement.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay, great. The next one up is related to our water division. So we have a system called the, I guess it's pronounced, SCADA, Supervisory Controls and Data Acquisition System. It's sort of our control and data system for our water system. It is from nineteen ninety-six. It has, it's obsolete. There are parts that, replacement parts that are no longer built by manufacturers and it's a major liability to get hacked. So for a lot of reasons, we want to replace this. Doing so will cost a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, which is a lot of money, but it's nothing compared to what could happen if the city got like ransomwared, which could absolutely happen. This is a frequent backdoor for hackers into municipal governments.
Okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to address this appropriation? Talk about the mayor, please.
I, I just want to note that this appropriation is actually a match to a grant we got from the state to close this backdoor. And DPW and IT worked together to get that. We were one of the first cohorts cities to, to get this, this grant. So just for cybersecurity.
Yes.
Does anybody else from the public have anything to say on this? Anybody online? Okay, seeing none. Councilor Peak.
Okay, request is hereby made for the approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings to be transferred to FY25 water SCADA project. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This appropriation will fund the design and installation of upgrades for the water department SCADA system. The city IT department has successfully secured a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in grant funding from the Community Compact IT Grant Program towards the total project cost of two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. The current SCADA system is approximately thirty years old, obsolete and in need of replacement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention or noes? Motion passes. Councilor Peak.
Okay, so the next one is related to, these are all, by the way, every one of the rest of these is a supplemental appropriation. The next one is a wastewater, related to the wastewater treatment plant. There is an upcoming aerator replacement project at the wastewater treatment plant. And so they thought this would be a good time to move forward with the replacement of one of their antiquated return and waste pumps. So that is what this is.
Great. Anybody from the public have any comments on this supplemental appropriation? Anybody online? Seeing none?
Okay, request is hereby made for the following appropriation. Amount requested, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars to be transferred from enterprise retained earnings to be transferred to FY25 wastewater treatment plant return and, or RAS pumps. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This appropriation will fund the installation of the new return and waste pumps and associated valving at the wastewater treatment plant. This work will be completed as part of the upcoming aerator replacement project, which results in a significant cost saving.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstention or noes? Motion passes.
Okay, one more DPW one. We have a, this is Lovefield Street Pump Station air valve replacement. So the Lovefield Street Pump Station was constructed in nineteen seventy-two. The air release valve on the discharge piping is in need of replacement. They're saying that the repair cannot be delayed until a full rehabilitation can be funded. In addition, ahead of full rehabilitation is necessary to install a bypass pumping connection, so the DPW is requesting three hundred and seven thousand dollars to be appropriated from Enterprise retained earning to cover the cost of this work.
Anybody from the public have any comments on this appropriation?
Um, I, the, this request and the last one are items on our integrated stormwater management plan that protects our water supply. We are, right, we need to spend twenty-two million dollars down on that plan with an authorization that we got for an outfall paw, and this, we start taking these projects one by one off. These are bigger things, so just as far as spending in future, water supply, a big deal, and and so that's why these are so important, so we can stay on top of that plan and federal permitting.
Anybody else from the public? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Peak?
I like to always, when I do the wastewater treatment plants, I'd always like to just say quickly that I one time heard a wastewater engineer tell me that in the last one hundred years wastewater engineers have saved more human lives than doctors. I just think about that for a moment, and in that, in light of that, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, three hundred and seven thousand dollars to be transferred from Enterprise retained earnings to be transferred to FY twenty-five Lovefield Pump Station improvements. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose. This appropriation will fund the construction of repairs and upgrades at the Lovefield Street wastewater pumping station. Construction will include replacing of the discharge pumping piping air release valve and installation of a bypass pumping connection to allow for a larger rehabilitation project to be completed on the station in the future.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes.
Okay, this next one is pretty, so this is a, often when we are, you know, working through our free cash at the end, there's a, before the end of the year, there's a large amount that's then transferred into reserves or stabilization accounts, because if we don't, then it just rolls over and we can't. It rolls over into free cash, which is a sort of government budget term, but the basics of it, if we don't put it deliberately into a reserve account, we can't touch it for like a year, and no one wants that. So this is doing that. The total amount is two million four hundred thousand dollars from free cash. One million eight hundred thousand dollars for, of it is going to general stabilization. That will replace the one million eight hundred thousand that was moved from general stabilization into last fiscal year's budget. In addition, there will be five hundred thousand going into capital stabilization and one hundred thousand going into tax rate stabilization.
Great. Anybody from the public would like to comment on this particular supplemental appropriation? Anybody online? Seeing none. Counselor Peak?
Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, two million four hundred thousand dollars to be transferred from free cash, two million four hundred thousand dollars to be transferred to general stabilization, one million eight hundred thousand dollars. Capital stabilization, five hundred thousand dollars. Tax rate stabilization, one hundred thousand dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund general stabilization, to provide stability in the current environment, to fund capital stabilization, to meet capital needs, and to fund tax rate stabilization to help reduce the impact of debt exclusions on the tax rate.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes.
Okay, so the next one is a nineteen thousand three hundred and nine dollars and six cents appropriation to cover the deficit in the cannabis stabilization budget. Mayor, would you, would you mind just, with this one? We did seventeen of these, and I'm sort of straining on the details of exactly. It was, it's just an accounting thing, but maybe you can make it more clear.
Yeah, so in the process of closing out the capital stabilization account, because we have not collected...
The cannabis stabilization.
Cannabis stabilization. We've not collected that local impact fee since July first of twenty twenty-two. So we let the, we had to figure out the interest and whatnot to close it out. Accounting area literally pasted and cut the wrong cell number into our final report, and we caught the deficit two weeks ago when we were balancing the books, getting ready for this. So not necessar- we didn't overspend. We just picked up the wrong number of when we were transferring one account to the other spreadsheet.
Okay. Anybody from the public want to speak on this? Anybody online? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Peak?
Mr. President?
Oh, oh, sorry.
Just one, do we wait till the motion?
I mean, you can wait till the motion's on the floor.
Okay.
Okay. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, nineteen thousand three hundred and nine dollars and sixty cents to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to cannabis stabilization. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to fund cannabis stabilization to cover deficit.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. My apologies, Counselor.
Yes, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so I was just, I was thinking as we got to this item that there was someone during public speak, I can't recall who it was, that had a question specifically about why, you know, we were, you know, when we're talking about shortfalls in money and that, you know, we're talking about this, you know, nineteen thousand dollars for the cannabis stabilization fund. And I just kind of wanted to put an extra point on something that was brought up for the CPA fund, and that is that sometimes when we're talking about, you know, why we don't have access to small amounts of money, and yet we are talking about large amounts of money for certain accounts. So the cannabis stabilization fund was a similar fund, sort of like the CPA fund, which is that when money goes into it, it is only allowed to be spent on certain things. So there are sometimes where we might have, you know, a surplus of, you know, a hundred thousand dollars here, or, you know, four hundred thousand dollars in this fund, and people say, well, why don't you just take the money from this account and just pay off, you know, whatever the, you know, the excess is? And, and it's for that reason, there are some accounts where you're not allowed to do that. There are only expressed things you're allowed to spend money on. So sometimes we do have a lot of money sitting in certain places. We just can't solve the problem that we would like to solve. Otherwise, I'm sure the state's auditor would have questions about what it is that we were doing. So I just wanted to do that as a sort of a quick public education snippet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes. Counselor?
Okay, the next one, and there's a few of these that sort of follow the same general principle. But this is a nine thousand one hundred and two dollar appropriation, and it's to pay a prior year bill. So sometimes there's reasons why some bills happen, and there's something that occurred last year. And so the money that we set in the budget can't be spent on it because that's money that we budgeted to spend on things that happened this year. And so when that happens, those things have to come before City Council to just sign off on them. It's mostly procedural, but this is a, this would cover a workers' comp audit adjustment invoice from FY twenty twenty-four.
Okay. Anybody from the public like to address the supplemental appropriation? Anybody online? Just name an address for the record.
Liz, Orchard Street. I know that the budget's important, but I don't really understand why we're doing this now instead of hearing the resolution, which is why everybody is here. You are paid to be here with our tax dollars. You can spend the night here. This is important. Did you not hear what happened in with the Supreme Court with Tennessee? Why don't you pause this right now and let these people be heard?
So I can address that, which is one of the reasons why we had considered trying to move the...
I know. You paused it, Salem. You put it on pause.
Well, actually, hold on a second.
Let him speak.
So this is, so right now...
No, don't tell me what to do, Brad. No, you put it on pause. It was supposed to be last week or last meeting, then it was supposed to be this meeting, and then you wanted to go further. This is important to these people. You think they're here to listen to the budget? They're not. So why don't you put this on pause, let these people speak, and then continue with the budget? Because that's what you're here for. That's not what we're being paid to be here for.
Okay, thanks for your input, but just to clarify, this, we're in a public hearing, which was one of the reasons why we had considered to push it to a time. We didn't have a public hearing because the public hearing is, by law, has to, we have to complete these, all of these items before we can end the public hearing, and that's what we have to do. We can't pause it. And we didn't have time before the public hearing was advertised to do it, which, so, you know, unfortunately, this is, like I said at the beginning of the meeting, this is what we're in for. And it's not ideal, and it's not the way I wanted to do it, but it's, it's just the way it is with budget season and what we have to do statutorily. So that's the reason. And I think that we're at a point where we can read the motion.
Sure. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, nine thousand one hundred and two dollars to be transferred from school workers' comp, four thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. City workers' comp, four thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. To be transferred to school workers' comp, four hundred, five hundred, four thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. City workers' comp, four thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: vote to pay prior fiscal year bill out of FY twenty-five budget. Covers workers' comp audit adjustment invoice for prior fiscal year FY twenty twenty-four. Policy period, July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. MIIa insurance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the supplemental appropriation? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay, so the next one up is a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar appropriation from free cash. It is going to be used to cover remaining health premiums across our four units. They're basically, they're actually flying equal money to each of the four units, and then they're gonna, because after that, they can intra-departmental transfer, move it around as needed. But the basic idea is that they calculate the premiums every year, and often they are not correct in one way or another, and in this case, they need some extra money to help pay some of the remaining premiums.
Okay. Does anybody have any, from the public have any comments on the health and dental insurance premiums? Anybody online? Okay, seeing none. Counselor Peak?
Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to be transferred from free cash, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to be transferred to thirty-two, thirty-two B Health and Dental Insurance for account... I'm sorry. Zero zero one dot nine one four zero dot five six zero zero sixty-seven thousand five hundred. Zero zero one dot nine one four zero dot five six zero one sixty-seven thousand five hundred. Zero zero one dot nine one four zero dot five seven four two sixty-seven thousand five hundred. Zero zero one dot nine four one zero dot five seven four three sixty-seven thousand five hundred. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to cover the remaining health and dental insurance premiums for May, June, July, and July twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay, this next one is very similar to the one two years ago, but it's to pay prior fiscal year bills for liability adjustment and deductible invoices for FY twenty twenty-four for both the school and the city. It comes out to a little under twenty-one thousand dollars.
Okay. Anybody from the public have any comments on this supplemental appropriation? Anybody online? Seeing none. Counselor Peak?
Amount is, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, twenty thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars to be transferred from school liability, ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. City liability, ten thousand ninety dollars to be transferred from, um, sorry, that's to be transferred from those, to be transferred to school liability, ten thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars. City liability, ten thousand ninety dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: vote to pay prior fiscal year's bills out of FY twenty-five budget. Covers liability adjustment and deductible invoices for prior fiscal year FY twenty twenty-four. Policy period, July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. MIIa insurance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Motion passes.
Okay, the next one up is a fifteen thousand dollar appropriation from free cash. This is gonna cover, it's again an old bill related to someone from the fire department that was injured on duty. There's a medical expense. So the billing occurred after the closing of the fiscal year, so it's fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay. Anybody want to speak to this fifteen thousand dollar supplemental appropriation? Person online. Seeing none?
Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, fifteen thousand dollars to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to injured-on-duty fire medical expense. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: cover remaining fire department injured-on-duty medical expenses from fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Billing occurred after fiscal year closing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstention or noes? Motion passes.
We're ten of seventeen downs. We are making progress. Okay, this one is sort of a catch-all that covers a handful of things related to the police department. So the amount requested is a hundred and thirteen thousand and ten dollars and fourteen cents. A lot of that is to cover the payout for the retirement of Staff Sergeant Ross. There's also some, an overtime shortfall as a result of a series of trainings and several police officers who are also in, I believe, the National Guard being deployed for periods. And then there's five thousand, five hundred dollars to cover some anticipated costs for some auto repairs.
Okay. Anybody from the public have any comments on this section of the budget? Anybody online? Seeing none. Counselor Peak?
All right. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested, a hundred and thirteen thousand and ten dollars and fourteen cents to be transferred from free cash, to be transferred to police base pay, eight thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars and four cents. Police overtime, fifty-seven thousand dollars. Police sick leave, thirty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-five cents. Police unused vacation, ten thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty-three cents. And then police auto expenses, five thousand five hundred dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose: to cover the cost of the contractual payout to Staff Sergeant Brian Ross, to cover a shortfall in FY twenty-five overtime as a result of one officer on maternity leave, three officers on paid parental leave, one officer that attended twelve weeks of K-9 training, one officer on military deployment for nine months, two officers with monthly weekend military training, one officer assigned to field training, and minimal special officers available due to post-re requirements, as well as a new hire that may be, that may need to attend the police academy. And to cover the cost of the additional auto supply and repair expenses for the remainder of FY twenty-five.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes.
Okay. Next one is snow. For those who don't know, snow is the one thing we're allowed to run a deficit on, so we basically always do because it's impossible to predict. And then at the end, we total the bills and we pay it out of Free Cash. So this happens every year, it's not that we under-budgeted for snow, it's that we did not budget for snow because we're allowed to not budget for it. And that's just been what the cities and every other city does forever. So the total amount came out to three hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and forty-five cents.
Anybody like to address the snow portion of the budget? Seeing none, council peak.
Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested three hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and forty-five cents to be transferred from Free Cash, three hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and forty-five cents, to be transferred to, snow overtime, twenty thousand one hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-three cents, rentals, ninety-five thousand five hundred and nine dollars and seventy-three cents, snow chemical, thirty-two thousand nine hundred and thirty-one dollars and four cents, salt, one hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-five cents, school plowing, thirty-six thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, travel and meals, two hundred, two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, Department of Public Works has experienced a shortfall of three hundred and twenty-one thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and forty-five cents in the snow and ice removal budget for FY twenty-two-five. We are requesting the funds be transferred from Free Cash to cover this deficiency.
Second, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion on snow? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes, motion passes.
Okay, next up, we have an appropriation of two thousand dollars that's to cover a shortfall in the FY twenty-five animal control professional services due to increased costs. So we currently have a contract with the Westfield Animal Control Department, so when we get an animal control call, if it's not something that the police can handle, Westfield Animal Control handles it. And their costs have gone up, so that includes just the various costs around kennels and vaccinations and inspections and all of that. So our, we're two thousand dollars short, so here we are.
Okay, anybody from the public like to address the, yes?
Hi, Dan, I live on Parsons Street, Dan Gilbert. I just want to bring to your attention that there was an absolutely ludicrous animal control situation that happened earlier this year. And the arrangement with whoever's handling animal control needs to be reformed or looked at because, I mean, I'm not gonna go into the details here, but it was insane.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address that? Okay, seeing none.
Okay. Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested two thousand dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to Animal Control Professional Services. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to cover a shortfall in FY twenty-five Animal Control Officer Professional Services as a result of increased costs to share animal control and animal shelter services with the city of Westfield. The monthly fee has increased by a hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-two cents effective November eighteenth, twenty-twenty-four. There are also additional monthly fees, which can include boarding and medical fees, cost per call for service, rabies testing and associated shipping, kennel inspection fees, et cetera.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions, motion passes.
Okay, the next up is a fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollar item from, is to cover the cost of supplies for EMS for the remainder of the year and also dispatch fees. So, yeah, and the dispatch on the peer support network fee.
Okay, anybody from the public like to address this supplemental appropriation? Any online? Okay.
Request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to ambulance supplies, eleven thousand five hundred, miscellaneous professional and technical services, three thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, cover cost of EMS supplies for remainder of the year and the cost for fire, police, and dispatch on peer support network fee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions, motion passes.
Got three more, we are so close. Okay, but who's counting? Request, so okay, so this one is a forty thousand dollar request that covers some personnel and, so it covers the cost of onboarding two new firefighters for medical evaluations that we have to pay for, it covers some repairs to the fire apparatus, it covers the annual service on the hose testing and the extrication equipment, contractual requirements for reimbursement for personnel for tuition and the building and annual service on the exhaust removal system and the Vision twenty-one system for the fire department.
Okay, anybody from the public like to talk about these fire department supplemental appropriations? Any online? Seeing none?
Okay, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested forty thousand dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, forty thousand dollars, to be transferred to Fire Medical Two Thousand, Vehicle Repairs, twenty-five thousand, Fire Equipment, seven thousand, Fire Education and Training, three thousand, Building Equipment, three thousand. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, Fire Medical, cost for onboarding two new firefighters for medical evaluations, vehicle repairs, cost for unanticipated repairs on fire apparatus, Fire Equipment, cost for annual service on hose testing, five thousand five hundred dollars, and extrication equipment, one thousand five hundred dollars. Fire Education and Training, contractual requirement for reimbursement of tuition or reimbursement of personnel for tuition, and Building Equipment, Annual Service on Exhaust Removal System, fifteen hundred dollars, and Vision twenty-one System, fifteen hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions, motion passes.
Okay, so the next one is a, this is a Free Cash appropriation of twenty-eight thousand dollars, and this is for school and city Medicare expenses, sort of similar to one we were talking about a little while ago, they budget these at the beginning of the year and they're usually off by something and this year we, they're off by twenty-eight thousand, so.
Okay, anybody from the public like to talk about this Medicare expense? Okay, seeing none, council peak.
Okay, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested twenty-eight thousand dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, twenty-eight thousand dollars to be transferred to, zero zero, again, this is just account numbers, zero zero one dot nine one two one dot five six zero one, fourteen thousand dollars, zero zero one dot nine one two one dot five seven four four, fourteen thousand dollars. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, funding for school and city Medicare expenses FY twenty-two-five.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Okay, motion passes, last one.
Last one, so this is a three thousand dollar appropriation from Free Cash for three hundred, what did I say? Three thousand, three thousand, no, couple, couple more, three hundred thousand. Yeah, all right, well, that's the first time I've messed up so far in seventeen deep.
You've done remarkably well.
All right, so, okay, three hundred thousand dollars from Free Cash to school interdepartment, intergovernmental. And the, the short version of this is that it, it covers some unanticipated deficits for special education tuition and transportation expense accounts. These things are again very challenging to budget for. Traditionally, this is a reason the school has, the school district has had certain fiscal policies, which gives them a bit of a cushion for this. As a result of conversations that many of you may recall being involved in a couple of years ago, we are, there, there, it's a little bit of a tighter situation now, which means that while other departments regularly come back for appropriations, the school department may from time to time need to going forward. We said at the time when all of that was going down, that when that happened, we would support them. And so I expect that we probably, I certainly will, and I expect the rest of you probably will as well. I don't know if there's anything else, like Laura, do you want to say anything else on this?
I'm gonna keep it brief, I, I feel you. AC shuts at nine, I've been told, so we had a one point four million dollar deficit, so we have nearly entirely drained our circuit breaker, which is the reimbursement funding we get for our special education students. We have also.
Could you sort of just identify yourself?
My name is Laura Scott, I'm the Chair of the East Hampton School Committee, I live on Plain Street. We're all a little punchy tonight, I apologize. That's true. So we, so to, to do our best in our good faith, we have nearly entirely drained our circuit breaker account as well as our school choice revolving account down to about twenty-five thousand dollars. So what we are asking the city to do is make us whole for the last three hundred thousand dollars. I heard one of the comments earlier expressing frustration about having to sit through this very arduous and boring process, but I just want to give you a second to reflect that what this money is paying for is, for example, tuition for some of our most, some of our students with the highest level of needs and most complex needs, this is paying for transportation for our unhoused students and our students in foster care. So if you're here to support vulnerable people, so are we. And we, it's not sexy, but this is the work that we're tasked to do. We thank you for your support and we are the last appropriation of the evening, everyone.
Okay. I might just open it, anybody from the public like to speak on the supplemental appropriation? Anybody online? Seeing none, council peak?
All right, request is hereby made for approval of the following appropriation. Amount requested three hundred thousand dollars to be transferred from Free Cash, to be transferred to School Intergovernmental. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, to cover deficits in school department, in the school department for unanticipated special education tuition and transportation expense accounts.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion, council, please.
I just wanted to quickly attest that this is incredibly difficult to budget for. We were very strong in our endorsement of the school committee handling this matter in such a way that they corresponded with our budgeting practices. I thank you for your indulgence and I'm happy to see that we will fulfill our obligations for this very important project.
Okay, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions, motion passes, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, our public hearing is now closed, which means we are going to reopen public speak, so if you have not spoken yet, you can line up again in the exact order you were before though, no, I'm just kidding. I will just remind you that please state your name and your address for the record, please address the council, we will give you three minutes. And if you do reach your three minutes, we will just let you know to finish your thought. If you would not go too much over that, we would appreciate that.
Point, point of order and question, please, Mr. President. With, with the duration of the meeting, can we do a five-minute adjournment for a bathroom break while everybody lines up?
Or we could just go at one time?
Can we go for three minutes?
I don't, I mean, they've been waiting a long time, let's just let it go, let's just let it go.
Sorry, I can make it through this, I'm also making it through.
That's okay, we got it. So you can feel free to step to the podium, don't mind us, some of us might go to the bathroom, but we're.
Are they gonna be able to hear in the bathroom?
I think they, well, they should be.
I don't think they can hear in the bathroom.
I don't think they can, so.
Do you wanna, do you wanna wait?
I, I would endorse a three-minute break.
For a bathroom break, so I will take a motion.
It would make more sense for them, for folks to be able to hear who's speaking.
I move for, for three-minute recess.
Yeah.
Three minutes?
Yes.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, three minutes.
Three minutes, what time do we have? Eight twenty-four, somebody?
All right, we're gonna call this back to order, a little over three minutes, so now, and if you wouldn't mind in the audience, if we could just be quiet so we can hear the people that are talking. And again, three minutes, just address the council, name and address, and if you reach your three minutes, we'll just let you know and just try to finish that.
Yep, all right.
Thank you, good evening, council. My name is Maddie McDougall, my pronouns are she/her. I am a resident of East Hampton at five and a half West Street. I relocated to East Hampton in large part searching for queer community, it was something that was lacking where I was previously living. And since moving here, I am now the founder and executive director of Resilient Community Arts, based in the Eastworks Building. The following statement is shared on behalf of the Resilient Community Arts RCA Executive Board in enthusiastic favor of the resolution in support of the East Hampton TNGDI community. The TNGDI acronym or initials, as was previously mentioned earlier tonight, is standing for trans, non-binary, gender diverse, and intersex, which was clearly stated in the first page of the resolution. RCA has had the honor of serving all kinds of East Hampton families in providing accessible arts programming since our founding in twenty-twenty-one. A majority of our school age enrollment includes TNGDI in identifying youth and/or youth being raised by TNGDI parents. Our most highly attended adult programming includes queer trans art group, many folks here tonight are attendees of their program. That program has, has been serving an estimated eighty-plus individuals annually. In partnership with Translate Gender, this program has recently expanded by popular demand to include a family queer trans art group. And as you can see even just from this, that tiny microcosm, these people are here and these people need services. RCA has been successful in creating a space where TNGDI folk of all ages and backgrounds can gather, connect, create, be themselves, and young people can see trans adults and know there is hope. While we look to the future, we must prepare for federal persecution of TGNDI people to become an even heavier force and more violent. Our community needs to be prepared to protect our TGNDI neighbors and protect those serving them. Where we live is a special place, there is a reason people want to live here, it is holistically a good place to live, and it would not be this way without the presence and contributions of TNGDI individuals and families. We need to protect TNGDI people because that means protecting our community, protecting our neighbors. The Executive Board of Resilient Community Arts hereby strongly encourages the City Council to vote in favor of this resolution in support of the TGNDI East Hampton community. Thank you.
My name's Lori Shine, I live on Ward Avenue in East Hampton. I want to tell the council how much I appreciate all of the work that you do, including on zoning and housing and budget items that keep this city vibrant and wonderful and moving forward with all of the requirements that we have upon us. I'm here tonight because I believe the trans and gender creative folks in our community who say they need and want protection, including my kids. I'm not great at that part. The targeting of transgender, gender nonconforming people in our country is at an all-time high. And many days we may wonder what we can do in this climate, many days I wonder that is apparent. Today you're in the position of being able to help, please do, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jade Russo and I live on Golden Drive. I'm here to ask you to vote in favor of the resolution establishing East Hampton as a sanctuary city for transgender, non-binary, gender diverse, and intersex people. With the federal government taking such an overt stance against trans people, doing what we can at the local level becomes even more important. Passing this resolution sends three messages. The first is a message to trans people saying, you are welcome here and we will stand up for you, when many other places are saying the opposite. The second is a message to the federal government saying that we are not going to be quiet and it will give in, that we will not give in and we will continue to fight for what we believe in. And the third is a message to other cities and towns around us. And the third is a message to other cities and towns around us to join in declaring themselves also as sanctuaries. We lead by example. Please vote in favor. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Marcy Blumenthal, 25 Sheldon Ave. I came tonight to urge strong support for passing the resolution that this be a community in East Hampton in support of transgender, nonconforming- need a glass of water? Excuse me, individuals. And I think that the community part of that sanctuary city statement is key. I'll tell you why briefly, from the perspective of a 30-years clinical social worker and mental health professional. And that is that we all have basic needs without which we wouldn't survive, but there are really two pieces that come to bear when it comes to mental health. One is a sense of belonging, and the other is a sense of purpose. And I really hope that the city that I live in can be a place of belonging for all people so that the mental health and every other component that it supports can be something found here in East Hampton. Thank you.
My name is Anna Simbor. I live on Lovefield Street, and I use they/them pronouns. I am a licensed independent clinical social worker, currently in private practice here in East Hampton, where I've also been a resident for the last four and a half years. I really love this town. My first experience with East Hampton was back in 2014. I was a fellow for the Safe Schools Program at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, where I ran leadership classes for students involved in what we then called their gay straight alliances. East Hampton High School generously offered to host our Western Region for a meeting, and I remembered it being a kind and welcoming place. When I moved back to Massachusetts in 2020, I knew exactly where I wanted to be, in that small town that was so welcoming. I hope to stay here for a long time. As a mental health provider, I work primarily with queer and trans folks. Every day, I sit with clients who are wrestling whether or not to leave the country, who wonder if they will be safe, if their children will be safe with the current administration. I often ask myself these same questions. I asked myself before leaving today, do I even feel comfortable giving comments publicly as a non-binary therapist? It didn't use to be like this. In Massachusetts, I've been doing this work for over a decade, and it's only going to get scarier. We have data from a recent Trevor Project study that tells us anti-trans laws cause up to a 72% increase in suicide attempts among trans and non-binary youth, which is especially concerning given the Supreme Court decision today to uphold bans on life-saving, gender-affirming care for minors. Trans folks have some of the worst outcomes systemically for mental health, and this is partially due to a lack of appropriate care. I work with lack of appropriate care. I see providers being less and less willing to work with trans folks, and in particular, trans youth, because of concerns around liability and their own safety. This only increases the gap between trans people's needs and the services available to them. The current administration is trying to snuff out trans folks, but we've always been here and we're not going anywhere. We have the opportunity to do some genuine good in our community at an incredibly scary and dangerous time. I urge the East Hampton City Council to do the right thing by supporting this bill and declaring our city a sanctuary city. Thank you.
My name is C. Baxter Chandler. My pronouns are he/him, and I live on Main Street in East Hampton. I speak tonight partially, well, to first identify, I am the secretary of the East Hampton Democratic Committee, but I'm speaking tonight as a resident, I guess, the third social worker, clinical social worker in a row, and a member of the LGBTQ community. I find it infuriating that in 2025, we are having to stand here and support a resolution to affirm the existence of a group of people, to have a resolution to protect the transgender, non-binary, gender diverse, and intersex community. But here we are. The Trump administration has made it abundantly clear that on the federal level, their evil and hateful goal is the silencing suppression, and I think eventual elimination of this group of people. It falls on the state and the city governments to stand up and reject this hateful agenda. I urge a unanimous vote in favor of this resolution. Any votes, that I will, I will be looking for and encouraging others to seek a public explanation of why a councilperson voted against this resolution on the side of hate and discrimination. Just as I, another side note, and someone else pointed out, as to the request to delay this vote because you don't know what TNGDI stands for, those letters were clearly defined in the resolution and available to the public. Ignorance and not doing your homework is not a reason to delay this resolution. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Keith Aaron. I'm a trans person and a resident of East Hampton in Precinct Two. I'd like to invite you all to imagine the following. You wake up every single morning, bracing yourself to face dehumanizing rhetoric about you and your gender identity. You also brace for news of the latest legislative efforts to strip away your legitimacy, remove your basic rights, and demolish your dignity. For decades, you lived trapped in a false identity and in a body that felt wrong for you and caused you to be constantly misgendered. Your nightmare included intermittent suicidality, the horrors of addiction, and eventual family Somehow, you've survived despite this nightmare, and for the past several years, you've been living in alignment with your true self. But now you're watching with horrified disbelief as the legal rights that allow you to live authentically are taken away. I want you to know, this is my reality and the reality of many trans people in this country every single day. Now imagine living in a town that has publicly said, "We see what's happening to you, and it's unequivocally wrong. We won't stand for it, so we're committed to protecting you with everything we've got." Contrast that with living in a town that chooses to ignore your reality and remain silent as you cry for help. This is what's on the table here tonight with this resolution. The resolution in support of the trans community isn't a threat to anyone else's rights. It is a public commitment to protect the fundamental rights of very vulnerable people who are being scapegoated. Asking this not as a solution, but as a step toward a binding ordinance. I urge you to do the right thing and pass this resolution at this meeting tonight. That's why we elected you, to keep East Hampton the, quote, "little city with a big heart." Thank you.
I'm a cisgender person here in East Hampton. This ordinance is the least fucking thing we can do. And I say that pessimistically because it's gonna get harder, and we're going to have to do things that don't cost nothing and that actually risk people's well-being and livelihood and confrontation. And this is the easy part. It's the no-brainer. And yeah, I expect you all to do the right thing.
Thank you, councilors. My name is Kim Jim R. McQuade. I'm a resident at H. Jones Drive in Precinct Five. I'm speaking tonight to urge this council to pass the resolution tonight in support of the transgender, non-binary, gender diverse, and intersex individuals in our community. I want to say thank you to the community members and to the councilors that put this resolution together. It's a privilege to be in community with you guys, especially at this time. And I also want to thank the ongoing advocacy that got this on the agenda tonight. It's an extremely important statement to make as a city, but now more than ever. As a few people have mentioned, today, the Supreme Court affirmed a horrifying ban on gender-affirming care in Tennessee that sets the stage for nationwide bans. And as other people said, that is a life and death issue for many people. This latest decision is effectively telling trans kids across the country that they have no right to grow up and move through the world safely as who they are. If we want to be on the right side of history, we need to use our voices as a community to stand up against this assault on human rights. There has never been a world without trans people, and there never will be. Please pass this resolution tonight.
Hi, my name is Amy Hochberg. I'm a licensed, I'm sorry, I live on Loudville Road in West Hampton. I'm also a licensed independent clinical social worker in Holyoke, and I work with trans young adults across Massachusetts, including East Hampton. My clients are terrified to be out in public, to live their lives, to access care, to freely exist. While each of us is able to make change in our own small corner of the world, not many have the power that you do to create and enforce a safer community for trans folks, to just exist and live their lives. If you have the opportunity to help people feel safer in the world, why would you not take it?
I'm Ursula Kadali. I live on Parsons Street in East Hampton. I am a trans person, she/her pronouns. I'm just here to urge you to pass this resolution. I do think it is a bare minimum, and I also think things are gonna get a lot worse, and we probably should be trying to do as much as we can as early as we can before it becomes impossible. And I also want to say the struggles are connected, and I really feel for the people who came up and talked about, like, big investment companies like buying property and raising the rent in East Hampton, and perhaps a sanctuary resolution means very little if most of us can't afford to live here anymore. So yeah, that's all I have to say. Thank you for all the work that you do. Free vows.
My name is Jesse. I live on Bridge Street in North Hampton. I'm gonna time myself. I have lived in this area for the past 25 years, on and off. I'm gonna say this resolution is just a gesture, but this gesture lets this room, all the people watching, all of the media, all of our surrounding towns know what each and every one of you think about the trans population in East Hampton and globally. Can you imagine any other group of people with a medical condition sitting in this room for over four hours, waiting in line to speak, to beg for their lives? Can you imagine a group of diabetics standing in line saying, "SCOTUS just said, 'I can't have insulin, and I'm gonna die.'" Would you be sort of hemming and hawing about this issue? If any of you men are imagining you're cisgender, call me a bad person for assuming your genders. If you want to get testosterone because your levels are low, you go to the doctor and you get it like that. If any women on this board, again, imagining you're cisgender women, please call me a bad man. I'm just assuming your identity. If you wanted estrogen, you would get it like that. But there are many people in this room who, under 18, now cannot get that. Massachusetts is not, there's no steel wall protecting trans people. This is not about identity politics. This is about life and death. If you don't know, yes, there will be many young people, let me check my time, there will be many young people who will suffer immense mental stress that leads to suicidality. If you have never met a parent of a trans person whose kid killed themselves, consider yourself lucky. If you've never lost a trans friend, consider yourself extremely lucky. Tons of people in this room have. I lost my train of thought.
Yeah, let me, just to keep you, one minute.
I have one more minute left. Yes, I know, I'm timing myself. I want you to know that there are trans adults living in your town who transitioned 20, 30, 40 years ago and had the reproductive organs removed, and they're synthetic, they're dependent 100% on synthetic hormones. If you do not pass this resolution, and SCOTUS and our government continues annihilating trans people, they will die without synthetic hormones, and their blood will be on your hands. This resolution, again, is just a simple gesture, but gestures add up, and you have a chance to save lives. And yes, this has taken us a whole heck of a lot of time, and is incredibly inconvenient for all of us, including you. I appreciate your time, but I want you to know, this is not about identity politics, this is about life and death. And like someone else said, we will be seeing how you vote. And if you don't vote the way we like, we'll vote you out. So thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Matthew Newman. I live on 165 East Street. Been living in East Hampton for 15 years. Love thy neighbor, that's what they say. So because I love my neighbor, because I believe in liberty and justice for all, let me set the pledge of allegiance for all, because in East Hampton where we live, I support our trans community members, our trans neighbors, our trans friends and coworkers, and our trans family members, because our trans friends deserve to feel safe in their own community, because trans people deserve to receive health care that they decide upon with their own health care provider, because I love this town that we call home, and because my child deserves to feel safe here, because I love and support my trans child, I urge this council to adopt this resolution. And I just want to piggyback, there was an earlier comment that because the title of this resolution had some seemingly random letters in it, that we should delay the voting on it. I highly disagree with this, and I hope that the turnout tonight shows unequivocally that people are able to read and understand this resolution and how important it is to pass now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carly Doni. I live on Cottage Street. I am a teacher and a lifelong resident of East Hampton. And now that I'm at my place in line, and kind of what I'm gonna say, it may be a little bit repetitive, but I think it's important. Trans people have been under attack for decades, and unfortunately, because of our current administration, it's only going to get worse. And the risks are not just about the violence towards trans people, but the internal mental health struggles as well. According to the East Hampton Resolution Statement, and I know some people have already mentioned this, there has been a 72% increase in suicide attempts since anti-trans bills have been introduced nationwide. When trans people feel supported and included in their jobs, families, and communities, the risk of suicide is greatly lowered. As a teacher, I've been able to see firsthand the positive and life-saving effect that supporting trans kids has on their lives and their futures. This issue is not just about supporting trans people in their journeys, but also about saving lives. Thank you.
Carolyn Cushing, Main Street, District Four, she/her. I want to thank the councilors and community members that have worked together over many weeks, months, to craft a resolution that lays out important information and context. The people who are not here tonight can read that. I hope you share it widely, and I thank them for that hard work. I have a more basic version of the resolution. Whereas transgender, non-binary, gender diverse, and intersex people are human beings who are our family, friends, coworkers, civic leaders, lovers, storytellers, and fellow East Hamptonites. Therefore, be it resolved. We get the flying fruitcake out of their way and stand up to support them when they are doing what they know they need to do to live lives of dignity, security, and joy. That's it. That's it. The full resolution is a communication from the city affirming basic humanity, human rights, so no need for a big debate or send it for study. Pass it tonight as a first step towards an ordinance, towards something that's more legally binding, toward the real action we need. And as everyone else will be, will be watching, will be excited to vote for people who vote yes in November.
Thank you, council members, and thank you to the community members and council members who worked on this resolution. My name is Frances. I'm an East Hampton resident living on Park Street in Precinct Four. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the resolution. Currently, in this country, we are being bombarded by discriminatory policies and laws, including the devastating ruling by the Supreme Court today, that are attempting to erase, annihilate, and dehumanize gender diverse people. These policies and laws are increasing the already high levels of violence gender diverse people face. They are increasing the likelihood that gender diverse folks will die by suicide. They are emboldening those who want to harm, demonize, and eliminate gender diverse people. These laws and policies uphold a system of violence. I know the city of East Hampton stands for something different. I know the city of East Hampton stands for something different. We are a city that welcomes and supports. I see it in the events we hold, in the resolutions that have been passed, in standouts and protests. I hear it when I talk to my fellow community members in the neighborhoods and businesses of East Hampton. The dehumanization, the attacks, they are real. They are really and truly taking lives. For me, it is simple. Which side of this atrocity are you on? It's either the side of love, inclusion, and safety, or the side of hate, exclusion, and violence. I know the city stands on the side of love, inclusion, and safety. Please let your vote reflect that by voting for this resolution. As a non-binary member of the community, and someone who has loved ones who are trans and non-binary, I wanna know my city is doing everything it can to show its gender diverse community members you value our lives, welcome our presence, and care about our safety. I wanna take a moment to invite members of the public who are here in support of this resolution but are not speaking tonight, to raise your hands. Anyone in favor and not speaking, please let us know by raising your hands. Thank you. Passing this resolution is a small but essential step in the direction we must go in. Council members, I'm asking you all to vote tonight at this meeting in favor for this unquestionably necessary resolution. Thank you.
Counsel. My name is Kay Collins, she/her. I live at 4 Carolav in East Hampton, in Salem's District, Councilor Derby's District. I've been in East Hampton for 13, almost 14 years. Over the last 10, 12, somewhat, some odd years, I've stood before you, and we've worked on many things together, most of you. And one of the things that I have frequently been tasked to do by the many groups that we've organized with is to talk about facts. My whole heart is in this, in standing with you today, because the trans, the T N G D I community is part of my LGBTQIA+ community. They are my friends, my beloveds, my nibblings, people that I work with, people that I organize with, and I will stand up and shout from the rooftops for their freedom and their happiness every single day. But I wanted to talk for those of you who don't understand the broad impact of what is happening at warp speed in this country every single solitary day for the last 10 years, but most particularly in the last couple of years. The anti-trans legislation tracker is tracking right now, in 2025, 973 bills in 49 states, 114 of which have already passed, 745 of which are currently active, and only 78 of which have failed, and that is on a state level. Right now, they are tracking also national anti-trans bills, amongst which are 62 national bills in the United States, one of which is USHB1, the one big beautiful bill act, which will remove any hope that the Scremety case that was decided by the Supreme Court did, in which the states' rights element, which was sending it back to Tennessee to continue to be decided by the states, it's gonna remove that option because it is going to make it federally illegal for anybody, not just children. So it's gonna take away the protection of the children, and it's going to make it federally illegal to prescribe gender-affirming care to anyone. So I want you to think about that for just a moment. It kinda ties back to what a lot of people have said in this room. I also would like you to say, like you to know, speaking of how fast things change, just today, the Trump administration announced that it will shut down the National LGBTQ+ Youth Suicide Lifeline in 30 days. So why is this crucial? Over the bunch of years that I've worked with you, we've worked on several ordinances. We passed a resolution in support of the 2018 Say Yes on... Excuse me, Say Yes on Three Bill, which was supporting the resolution to continue to have public accommodation laws in Massachusetts so that anyone could use the restroom of their choice in Massachusetts. Just this year, about a month ago, a woman who was cisgender used a bathroom in Boston. She happened to have short hair. She was dragged out of the bathroom by security officers and thrown out of a hotel along with her wife. Some of you know my wife. My wife has short hair. So how does this affect us in Massachusetts despite the fact that we already have public accommodation law? This means that the tenor of our state and our country has been changing rapidly. What does this mean in East Hampton? A lot of people said, "We don't need this. We don't need this," based on state's laws. I just noticed that we happen to have, right now, despite many people's assertions that we didn't need it, language on our city website that says, "Know your rights." Right? So let's tie together the fact that all of our causes and all of our fights are interwoven together, and the more we stand together, the harder it is to make us fall. A few years ago, when we passed the welcoming city ordinance, nobody thought we were gonna have know-your-rights training on how to stand up against ICE on our city website passed by our police. They would've said it would never happen, but we stood up for our community, and we're gonna stand up for our community today. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Pagan, and I live on Clap Street. Massachusetts has this incredible history of providing gender-affirming care to children. In fact, I think we were the pioneer state to do that in the early 20th century, 21st century. Children's Hospital in Boston began providing some of the first gender-affirming care for children in the country, and people were flying from countries all over the world to Children's Hospital to get care they couldn't get anywhere else in the world. And I know that because I wrote a profile of Dr. Norman Spack, who was the pioneer of that care in the United States, for the Boston Globe at that time. I'm a journalist. And after that piece came out, Dr. Spack received so many death threats that he decided not to speak out again in public, at least not for a while. I don't know if he's decided to kind of begin speaking again, but that gave me a taste of, you know, just how dangerous this can be, how much hate can be directed, not just at the trans community, but at the providers, at the medical system, and how, you know, this really is an issue that touches everybody because we're talking about just providing the integrity, the safety of our medical workers, as well as trans people in the community and children. And, you know, it was that experience that really made me into a lifelong activist, working with the trans, doing what I could for the trans community. So I would love to see this resolution pass. Thanks.
Hello. My name is Omar Gomez. I live in 14 Clark Avenue. State rep, former city councilman, former city council president. I'm here tonight for asking one simple thing. Please say yes. It's a simple... But before that, about the procedures, I hope not any councilor asks to move this to a committee. I had the time to read the resolution at least six times, and I'm a little busy. So if I could read it at least six times, you have the opportunity to read it more than six times. It's clear. I give your credit to who deserved the credit, to the people, to our neighbors, the people who put their words in this resolution. I'm glad they live in Massachusetts, because in Massachusetts, at least, we have some protection, Chapter 127, from the MGL. But it's some protection, not all the protection. And this is not a long meeting compared to what they live every night. They have long nights, thinking about what could happen tomorrow. They have long days about what could happen tomorrow to them, to our neighbors, to our family members, to our residents. Please say yes. It's about time that someone stand up. It's no confidential that this resolution is happening today. It's not. The Supreme Court say no. The federal government is not standing up for them, but we are. And today is gonna be approval of that. I'm not just asking you guys to say yes. I'm asking the mayor too, because she can veto it, and I hope she doesn't. Because look at how many people we have here today, and they have more. And I'm saying that because the election is November. I'm not saying you to be scared. I'm saying you to be concerned, because you should be doing what is right. Again, this is our people, and we cannot let them let go down. We can't. Again, for the last time, I'm gonna ask you to say yes to this resolution. It's needed, and it's about time, and it's the first step of the marathon, because the next one should be our ordinance, the same way that we do a welcoming trans ordinance. And we have people that don't like it, but we have to do the right thing. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dean Hartzorn, and I'm a resident of East Hampton on Pleasant Green. I've spent the majority of my life living in small towns in Idaho, communities that were very different than East Hampton, Massachusetts. It was not until I moved to Massachusetts four years ago that I realized that I've been living with the constant weight of feeling like my local and my state government officials were always on the brink of throwing me under the bus. I didn't realize until I moved here, and I no longer felt that on a daily basis, just what that meant, not feeling like the people that I had elected to represent me were looking for opportunities to not do that. I love living in East Hampton. I love the passion that our local city officials bring to doing their jobs, like passing our city budget. I love the schools and the teachers and the creative and the cultural arts events that take place here. I love the farms. This is the place where I have grown into my more authentic self. It's a place I call my home, and it's a place that I'm proud to call my home. And yet, I'm once again finding myself feeling that weight, that feeling of despair and dread, this time coming from the federal level, like the others here tonight. I've been feeling this. I'm so grateful that I live in Massachusetts. I feel that every day, and yet I still feel this sense of oncoming doom, and as my community has faced numerous political attacks across the country. Although this resolution is symbolic, it's also tremendously powerful. It takes the position that this city and this council notices us, appreciates us, and believes that our families deserve to be a part of this town. It asserts that this is a place of safety and belonging, and a place where people who are seeking that can find it. Words matter, and I urge the city council to use the words in the proposed resolution to affirm that East Hampton is a city where trans people are a valued and respected part of our community, and a community where we can all find a place to thrive. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Megan Harvey. I live on Button Road in East Hampton. I am a mother to three children. I'm an elected member of the East Hampton School Committee. I'm a member of Tapestry Health Board of Directors. I'm an epidemiologist, and I'm a staunch advocate for LGBTQ+ rights and for this resolution. I'm heartened by all of the testimony and the words that I'm hearing here tonight. It's really lovely to be amongst this group. Words matter. The citizens of our city are listening, and our children are listening. And I want them to hear this message from all of us, and from the city, and from their schools, that you belong here, you are valued, you have the right to be safe here, to feel safe here. It matters for trans children and folks, but it matters for everyone to know that we are taking part together in standing up for our neighbors. I thank you for writing this resolution and for bringing this resolution forward, and for all of those community members who have helped craft this resolution. It's not enough, of course. We all know that. No one thinks one resolution, ta-da, we've solved the things, but words matter, and it's an important step, and it's an important message for our community and for our children. I look forward to what I hope will be your unanimous support of this resolution, and I look forward to sharing this resolution from the school committee and reinforcing it among the children in our district.
My name is Rae. I live on the Oxbow. I'm a parent of a trans child who receives care here in your city and who depends on that care to survive. I nearly lost him last year, and it is the most powerless and scared I have ever been. And I'm a professional healthcare worker. I've been a nurse, I just do a nurse for over 20 years. And I felt at a loss, because we know our healthcare system already faces so many struggles. And one of the ways people die is waiting for care. And we have such a dearth of care right now, not just for, you know, trans people, especially for trans people, for all people. Primary care is in crisis. It's in collapse. I wrote a grant three years ago with one of your nurse practitioners from this city that the first line was, "Primary care is on fire." It didn't get funded, but it's just gonna get worse. I can't imagine how we'll continue if the very fragile system we already have falls apart further. And in my other world, my job, I study healthcare systems and health information, and this past summer, I sat on a federal advisory rules committee. I don't know if you all are aware, when the Affordable Care Act passed, it required creation of a national database of all electronic health record data in the country. It's supposed to be de-identified. We all know. I know the studies because I researched this. It's nothing's ever truly de-identified. My job on that committee was to fight as hard as I could for exclusions to allow folks to protect themselves from having their data turned over without their consent, because as we know, the government is getting much better at weaponizing data, as they just admitted turning over Medicaid data about immigrants this past week to allow them to be hyper-targeted even more by ICE in hospitals and health systems, and that is one of the places that are under attack. I've worked in them. I now work to protect them, and I know now from serving at the federal level that the fight is in the hyper-local spaces right now, because whatever protections we thought we had, we worked hard to pass some over the last several years, they're all gone. They've all been erased from the website or rescinded in a single, you know, executive order, which isn't legislation, but people keep acting as if it's law, and so it becomes law. I want my child to survive. I want all of us to survive, and we're gonna need to do that together. So thank you so much, and I do hope all of you will be voting yes tonight.
Hi, I'm Shelley Greenstein, Fairfield Ave. Similar message to the rest of the folks. I wanna talk about the Civil Rights Act. It was passed in 1964, just a few months after my birth, and that should've been it. But no, we've been fighting to actually protect this act and the legislation enacted underneath it, and now we're in the middle of a crisis, one that requires we protect each other against a frightening reality which affects all of us. The fascistic and hateful government policies being proposed and enacted are destroying the progress we've made towards creating a more egalitarian society. The anti-transgender agenda is one of the more disgusting displays of this hate. Now is the time to take action. Now is the time to take action. What is compassion, kindness, love? Do we hold these values? Can we all agree on them? As the federal and state governments can no longer be trusted to protect all people and continues its descent into fascism, it is here at the local level where we must continue, we must come together. Do we believe that each individual should live an authentic life full of joy and celebration and not hate and discrimination? I hope so. Please, let's pass a strong statement declaring ourselves and our city to be on the side of love. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jay Owen. Am I allowed to speak if I'm not an East Hampton resident? Okay, wonderful. I'm here from North Main Road on North Main Street in Williamsburg. I moved up to this area. I'm originally from South Florida. I've lived in Washington DC for the past 11 years, and I moved up here with my partner about five months ago now. We were looking for a safe place to live, and we didn't feel like DC was going to be it during this time. We were seeking a place for our nervous systems to get some rest as much as possible. And this is a safe place. And we have found a community that is stronger and more loving than we ever could have possibly hoped for and more quickly than we could have hoped for. But unfortunately, I think it also can be so safe that it's easy to not realize how tenuous that safety is and to take it for granted. So I'm really glad that we're here tonight talking about this. I also want to say that towns and the reason that I'm speaking up from Williamsburg is that towns in this community are known progressive leaders in LGBTQIA rights. And really just being an incredible place for us to live and find joy in being in community with each other, which is what brought us here. And it's known outside of this area for that, which means that other places are looking to this area for guidance. Not only what is possible, but what is permissible. And so by voting yes on this resolution, you're saying that yes, it is possible. Yes, it is permissible. Yes, you should be doing this too, and here's how you do it. We're giving them a blueprint to enact this and wherever else folks want to organize, like we have organized tonight. And thank you so much to the organizers who put this together. Incredible work. I'm possibly even in my little town of Williamsburg. So I hope the council votes yes in favor of this. Thank you.
Hi, townspeople. My name is Mark Wamsley. I live at Bert's Pitt Road in Florence, or like I like to call it, Northeast Hampton. I actually came here tonight to speak on a completely different topic. But I was so moved by what people have said. I felt compelled to speak and just share a very short anecdote. As everyone knows, this past weekend was Father's Day. And I got a great surprise. I got a call from my trans little brother, Christopher. Christopher and I don't speak very much. We're of different generations. We didn't grow up in the same household. But, you know, he was a wonderful person, and I was really touched that he called me to wish me Happy Father's Day. And it was an absolutely lovely conversation. We talked about everything from work to, you know, I asked him about how his transition was going, and he talked about, you know, his recent doctor appointments down in Philadelphia where he lives. And at the end of the conversation, he said, you know, we really should talk more. And I wholeheartedly agreed. And isn't that really the bottom line of all this? People need to be able to feel free and feel safe to speak, to feel part of a community and to be part of a family. So this seems like one just easy step to create that. So on behalf of Christopher, I urge you to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sam Hunter. And this time I'm going to do it right. I'm Mayor Street, East Hampton. I'm also on the school committee, but I'm not talking on behalf of the school committee. I just wanted to jump in and I just want to kind of, so I, for those, you all know me, I'm the city council, but pretending that you don't. I moved to East Hampton about 10 years ago, and I served on the school committee very briefly. And it was a really rough time in my life for lots of reasons, and I ended up not seeking a second term. I was kind of pulled back on the school committee again a couple of years ago due to some resignations that had happened. And the thing that I said at the time was to my friends who were telling me I should get back on school committee, I said, I can't because I literally just decided this weekend to transition. I can't do that in public. And they convinced me, you know, like it's not going to be a big deal here. Like, it's fine. And I didn't believe them because they're not trans mainly. I was like, I don't know if you guys know what this means. But I just kind of felt like it was something I didn't, I don't know why I, I always say this is like my weird hobby. I don't know why I like this, but I couldn't like stay away. And I'm really glad that I joined the school committee. It really gave me, it got me involved in the community in a way that I really, I feel like makes good use of my gifts. But also, like, I've never had any problem with transitioning on the school committee. And I ran, you know, I joined under one name, and then when I ran that, I had to hurry up and do my name change so I could run under the right name. Like, that was difficult, but I got it done. I had to pull papers a little bit later than I wanted to, but it worked out. And it's been, it's been really like such a gift to serve the community this way. And so I think like when we talk about this stuff, you hear a lot about like, what happens if we don't pass it? Or what, you know, the mental health impacts or like the kind of the suicide rate and stuff. But I also just want to say that like, being trans is also really good and fun. I am like, I'm happier than I've ever been in my whole life. And I did that here with you all, and you all were a part of that. And I really appreciate that, and it has really meant a lot to me and my family. And so I expect that this is going to pass unanimously tonight, and I appreciate that. And, you know, I just wanted to remind everybody, like, you can decide to do this, you know, you can decide to be who you are, even if you're in your 30s and even if you have a kid and even if you are an elected official. Like, you know, there's no deadline. You don't have to, yeah. So thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much for that. And I would be remiss to not acknowledge the people online that have their hands up. And I probably should have interspaced them. So if you're online, I apologize. We did have a very long line of people here too. So if you would like to speak, I will take you in order. And if you don't, then you can just lower your hand. So I'll give you a second. If you'd like to speak, leave your hand up or raise your hand. And it looks like I have Carrie Beth Garvey. Are you there? And if I butcher your name, I apologize. No Carrie Beth?
They're on mute.
And they are unmuted? So, and you also have to unmute yourself because I can't do that. And maybe we'll come back to Carrie Beth. Mona?
Hi, yeah, my name is Mona. I live on Mount Mill Road. I'm a trans woman who grew up in East Hampton. I went to EHS. I've lived here most of my life. And I could not be more in favor of supporting the resolution in support of the trans community. I was very scared when I came out as trans in 2022, which in retrospect feels like a lifetime ago. But I'm not exaggerating when I say that it saved my life. There's been talk of suicide rates today, but it isn't just an abstract horrifying statistic. I am someone here talking to you that would not be alive tonight if I hadn't transitioned. Life felt fake before, like I was just going through the motions, and it didn't matter much what happened to me because this life was a bust anyways. And transitioning gave me a new appreciation for the world. It allowed me to feel what it really meant to be myself and to enjoy my time during this life. But it still felt so scary doing it. And that fear came from not knowing how my community would react if I came out, not knowing how many family members or close friends would reject me. And I've seen that fear grow amongst my trans friends in recent months, and it's a terrible thing to see. I've had people call me brave for coming out as trans and dealing with the adversity that comes with it. But I shouldn't need to be brave to be as I am. A young trans person shouldn't have to be brave enough to face constant abuse just to be who they are. And the current administration is doing as much as it can to send the message that it doesn't care about us, that it would prefer to see us suffer in the closet than dare to live our lives to the fullest. And it just, it breaks my heart because that message doesn't just directly affect us insofar as it restricts our access to medicine, but it also, it emboldens bigots to be more cruel and violent towards us. I've noticed a large uptick in hate speech and threats towards myself and my friends in recent months, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. The president is sending a clear message that we are the other, that it doesn't matter what happens to us. And people are listening to that. This is our chance as a community to send the message that that violence, that cruelty is in us, that we care equally about every member of our city, that we believe in life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness for all citizens, no matter their background, no matter their identity. It has been a very scary, dark time for trans people, and we need a win. So I urge you to vote in favor of this resolution.
Looks like next is Romarian spec. Hopefully I said that right. And so if you're a Romarian spec, you can unmute and lower your hand. There we go. Just unmute. There we go.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I'm very bad at tag. Hi, my name is Rumi. I use he/him pronouns. I live on Parsons Street. I am a trans father and of a trans child. I've lived in East Hampton for about five years. And I would love to be with you guys in person, but my schedule's actually been all messed up because I was just helping two trans people from the South move from Texas to East Hampton. So we are a safe East Hampton and a welcoming city and as a sanctuary city. And I hope that we can continue to be safe in the town of East Hampton because I don't think you guys would choose for a scremmety to be decided today. But the trans community is reeling right now. And I would really hate to be an isolated trans person or be a trans kid and hear that a town in Western Massachusetts couldn't pass a sanctuary city resolution. I don't know where else to tell people to go or to come if they want to try to be safer. And you did not choose for today to be a historic day, but it is. And I urge you to give trans people in the country and for those of us who are here tonight in front of you, as we expect you to fully, to note our human rights and to give us a place to say that someday, somewhere, you could get them respected, you know? And if you won't do it for that, I hope that you know that if you vote no, I have questions about how you want me to explain that to my nine-year-old who goes to Mountain View. Thank you so much for your time.
Uh, it looks like next, Grippino Kennedy.
Hi, I'm myself not an East Hampton resident. I am actually living in Wollioke, but I'm speaking on behalf of my friend Will Schwartz, who lives at Parsons Street. They're unable to make it tonight, so I'm just going to read what they sent me. As I'm unable to attend tonight due to work, I'm grateful to have my opinion nonetheless shared here. I have been a resident of East Hampton for almost five years now. I have chosen this town to raise my child and build community. I am also a social worker and a therapist, and I have chosen East Hampton and the surrounding areas as a place to dedicate my labor in building greater strength, resources, and supports for those who call this town home. I and many of my community members are trans. We have built a home here and invested our time, our resources, and our lives in this town. Now it's time to see if the town of East Hampton is going to prove worthy of that investment. The question at the heart of this town hall is not whether or not East Hampton should be a sanctuary city. It's whether the town, its leadership, and its citizens are willing to trade our safety for their comfort and convenience. It's about whether the town is willing to abandon the well-being of trans and non-binary children who live here if East Hampton will tell our youth that their lives and their safety matter less than the ability for cis citizens to keep their heads buried in the sand. These are not hyperbolic or hypothetical situations. With the increase in hate crimes, the increased legislation, and pressure to control trans bodies and eliminate trans people throughout our federal government, we are already being abandoned by our governments and our fellow citizens. These are the immediate realities that we as trans residents of East Hampton face on a daily basis. Now East Hampton gets to make the real choice. Are we as a town willing to defend our neighbors to actually care for them even when it's not convenient? Or if it requires taking a little of the risk to prevent much greater risk for another? Or is East Hampton just another town ready to throw trans bodies onto the pyre to keep themselves warm in chilly political weather? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it looks like next, Chelsea Tremblay. If you're there.
Hey, hello, y'all. I'm Chelsea. I go by they/him pronouns. I live on Pleasant Street in East Hampton. I am also a clinical social worker. I currently hold my LCSW. I work in community mental health. I will not specify the agency because I am not speaking on their behalf tonight. I'm speaking on my own. Working with the local community of very trans people, we're under attack, y'all. It's really intense. It is very difficult to see how many people are struggling and to see how many people would really, really benefit from a motion such as this being passed. As other people were speaking, a lot of my points about like the safety, the suicide rates, all of that were kind of echoed, so I cropped them off a little list I keep on my side. But the things that I really wanted to reiterate is that when I work with local trans people, especially our trans teens and adolescents, they are scared. They do not have any reason as of right now to think that their local communities have a vested interest in keeping them safe. And you will have a chance tonight to prove them wrong. And I would love for you to prove them wrong. When we show our trans community members, especially our most vulnerable trans minors and teenagers, that we are behind them, they become safer. They become less likely to kill themselves. I don't want to mince words. Refusing to stand behind them and support them means that they will kill themselves. Means that there will be dead teenagers in our towns and our communities. And I hope that if any of you choose to vote no tonight, you are ready to keep an eye out in the obituary for the next couple of months. And any trans person that is marked there, just put a little arrow and say, I did this, I did this, I did this. And really hold yourself to that accountability line. Because though you are a local, you do not control what happens at a federal level. I know a lot of people have reiterated, you didn't choose to have a Supreme Court decision come out tonight. You are still accountable to how you respond to the aftershocks of that. There are people in your town who are vulnerable. There are people in your town who are vulnerable that might consider whether or not they want to vote for you again if you choose not to pass this motion. The last thing I really want to make sure I mention is that this local area has been nourished by trans people culturally for decades upon decades upon decades now. So just a reminder that when you look at cultural chaos, when I see the number of trans artists and vendors and stalls there, I really want us to consider what impacts it would be culturally if we choose not to stand behind our trans community members tonight. Thank you.
It looks like East Hampton Clay is next. So East Hampton Clay, you can unmute and lower your hand if you're there. Oh, there we go.
Forgive me. Hi, my name is Liz Rodriguez, and I'm the owner of East Hampton Clay. I'm a East Hampton resident. For the past eight years, I live on Parsons Street. And I'm here because I own one of the largest pottery schools in the state. And more than 50% of my community is trans and queer. And more than fifty percent of my community is trans and queer. And I'm speaking on behalf of them. Um, I do everything in my power to keep this community safe. And the voting yes tonight would help make this community feel safe. And not just from a heartfelt standpoint, but from a business standpoint. Um, um, like the previous person had said, um, from revenue standpoint, East Hampton would lose a lot if, um, we did not become the sanctuary city. And while I am not trans or queer, um, I understand what my community feels as a person of color. So, um, um, that's all I have to say. And thank you for your time and thank you for your consideration. And I think it's really important for businesses, um, um, for this town to become sanctuary city for the businesses of this town. But, um, I just wanted to speak on that front. Thank you.
And it looks like the last online person, uh, Carrie Beth Garvey, if you're there. You can unmute and lower your hand. And thinking maybe not. Do we have another person in house to speak? So maybe we'll do that.
Yes, I'm sorry to do this to all of you. Um, hi. But I finally figured out what I wanted to say. Uh, my name is Olivia Lenson. Um, I live in Williamsburg with my partner Jay, um, who you all have already heard from. I just wanted to share a little bit about our, our experience moving here. Um, I think it might give a slightly different perspective. Um, we moved here in January from DC, as Jay said. Um, the first thing, quite literally, the first thing I did was to get online when we were considering where to move and look at what cities have the best protections for LGBTQ folks. And I found immediately that Northampton was a trans sanctuary city. And that was a signal to me that this was somewhere that would be safe, somewhere that would be welcoming. And I want to tell you just a little bit about my partner. Um, they're a passionate reproductive health nurse. They're an activist, they're a community organizer, a cat parent, and history nerd, among other things. Um, they love to build things. They were a small business owner. Um, I'm pretty cool too, but I think they're great. So I just, I want you to know that when you pass legislation like this, you send a message that this is a safe place for people like us. You send a clear message to people across the country that this is a safe place for people to come and be welcome. Um, I have a master's in public policy, that's a side note, but I happen to know that that's good for revenue, that's good for business. That is good for everyone, good for equitable practices. You attract brilliant, kind, community-oriented people and people who will invest in your community because you're investing in them. Thank you.
So again, it looks like, um, everybody that wanted to speak has had a chance to speak, which I hope, and if it's not, we can afford a little bit more time for that if, uh, we haven't done that. And then, uh, if everybody has had the chance to speak, that would like to speak, I would, uh, hand it over to, who am I handing it over to? Counselor Smith. So I will hand it over to you now.
Okay, thank you. Um, ready to start, ready to start. Is Keith in the room? Keith was here earlier. And one of the things that Keith said to me that really struck me and stayed with me is one of the reasons why tonight is so important for the TNGDI community is because it remains, this public space remains our right to be in it. It's our ability to organize, to come together. And very rightly so, Keith said, we need to do this because we need togetherness and we need community. And so it's pretty easy to write this down. The hard part, and the one I want to commend all of you for, is being in this room of collecting the testimony of people who can't be in this room and for showing up. And I will be the one reading the resolution. I certainly didn't write it alone. And I want to give my co-authors an opportunity to speak on this before I write it, before I read it into history.
Sure, I'm happy to start off. Thank you, Counselor Smith. Um, for anyone who does not know me, my name is Polisha Jazak. I am the precinct two counselor here in East Hampton. I am also a, a new counselor, so this is my fifth or sixth month on council, but I'm so honored to be part of this resolution and honored to be in this space with you all. Um, I'll keep it brief because I know we've been here a long time and we have a long resolution to read through. Um, but it's, it's important, it's vital, it's critical. Um, another thing I'll mention is that in my day job, I am a DEI practitioner. I am also biracial and disabled. And a few thoughts that kept swirling in my head as I was listening to you all tonight was first, there is no hierarchy of oppression. And second, our struggles are all interconnected. That just kept sticking with me, and I think it's so critical to name that and to reaffirm what you've all shared with your stories because we need to protect our most vulnerable and most marginalized members of our community. Because East Hampton is a little city with a big heart. But the reality is that without people, this is not a city. And without supporting all of our community members, what are we? It's not worth it to be here or to live here. And we've heard over and over again how welcoming and wonderful and warm and, and full of community this place is. I am a resident here four years, coming up this summer. And one of the things that really drew me to East Hampton was a vibe, if you will, because I moved here in 2021 when there was, uh, nothing open, COVID lockdown, there was no, no vaccine. And my husband and I kept driving through and just feeling a vibe, literally. That's why we chose to move here. Very lucky for us that we found out after we moved here that this was such an amazing place to live, and I can't imagine living anywhere else. But really, it's, we, there's such a strong, wonderful, welcoming spirit to this community. And so I'm not gonna keep speaking on this because, again, I'm just reiterating what you all are sharing. But I'm so heartened to hear from you all. I want to thank you all for being here. Yes, it's been a long night. Yes, this is the, the boring part of city government and, um, how things work. And so if nothing else, we've heard your testimony. And you've also learned a little bit more about what it looks like to be on city council and how we get things done here. It's, it is important, even if it's not always sexy, as someone said earlier. Uh, I also want to really thank, um, those members of my precinct and my actual neighborhood who have spoken here tonight. I really appreciate you all. And I also want to thank the business members, um, and especially East Hampton Clay, of which I'm a, a proud member. And I found it's a wonderful welcoming space, and I appreciate you all for being here and for speaking tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. I'm gonna keep it even briefer because I know we really want, uh, to get this, uh, but it has been mentioned. Um, if anyone is interested in running for city council, you can pull papers on July 1st. So if this is exciting to you. I, I think what's really important today to recognize and understand is that this resolution was written by the community. And these words are you affirming you. I don't know, um, what else to say other than that. Um, I think today was an incredibly difficult day, um, for a number of reasons. Um, but particularly for the trans, um, you know, gender non-conforming community. Um, today was incredibly painful. It's, it's frightening, it's scary. Um, but as long as we stick together and do things like this that allow us to demonstrate the love that we have for our community, then we can get through these times. Um, but I appreciate all the words that were spoken today. They were heard, you were seen. Um, and I am so appreciative of the opportunity to be your neighbor.
Okay, this is for you, and this is ours, and I'm sorry it took this long. The East Hampton City Council recognizes that history has repeatedly shown that the most marginalized and vulnerable members of society are the first to be attacked under authoritarian rule, which then sees such attacks extended to broader swaths of the population. Local government is the last line of defense against such attacks. This is our response, to which we assert the following. Whereas transgender, non-binary, gender diverse, and intersex, TNGDI, people have existed throughout the globe since the beginning of humankind. And whereas, since January twenty-five, TNGDI people have come under a rapidly escalating threat at the federal and state levels throughout the United States. As the drafting of this resolution, there have been twelve federal executive orders strictly and wrongly denying gender outside of the gender binary as defined by these orders in eight hundred ninety-five anti-trans bills that have been filed across forty-nine states, including Massachusetts. This is more than any previous number of anti-trans bills considered. Oh, I'm sorry. This is more than any previous year on record and the sixth consecutive record-breaking year for the total number of anti-trans bills considered in the United States. These bills target varied areas of life in society, including but not limited to healthcare, education, sports, bathroom access, and the military. This number is only anticipated to grow in the coming months and years. And whereas these executive and legislative efforts, which seek to block TNGDI people from receiving basic healthcare, education, legal recognition, and the right to publicly exist, represent a coordinated effort to erase the very existence of TNGDI communities, including members of our own East Hampton community. Additionally, these attacks on TNGDI individuals are spreading and will continue to spread to members of the wider LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas, TNGDI individuals, who often possess multiple intersect, intersecting marginalized identities, are among the most marginalized and vulnerable members of our community. They historically face higher levels of poverty, lack of access to stable housing, and limited economic opportunities. TNGDI individuals, particularly BIPOC trans women, are also disproportionately affected by harassment, which escalates to physical, psychological, and ultimately fatal violence. And whereas, TNGDI youth, teens, and adults of all ages, who are children, siblings, parents, friends, and chosen family, deserve human dignity, support, and the right to live healthy, fulfilling lives equal to those of their cisgender counterparts. And whereas, suicide risk is eight times higher for transgender youth compared to their cisgender counterparts due to mistreatment from society. And there has been a seventy-two percent increase in suicide attempts among transgender and non-binary youth since the passage of anti-transgender bills at the state and federal levels. And whereas, TNGDI immigrants, refugees, and asylees also face additional persecution due to their immigration status. And whereas, fatal violence disproportionately affects transgender individuals compared to their cisgender counterparts. The convergence of transphobia, racism, and misogyny creates a heightened risk, in particular for Black transgender women. As reported by the Human Rights Campaign in 2024, fatal violence against transgender and gender diverse people disproportionately impacted BIPOC community, making up seventy-eight percent of victims since 2013. Over half, fifty-six percent of all victims, have been Black trans women. And whereas, the internationally recognized Transgender Day of Remembrance, an annual observation on November twentieth originated in Massachusetts in nineteen nine, nineteen ninety-nine, as a response to the murders of Rita Hester, Monique Thomas, and Chanel Pickett. Three Black transgender women, and BIPOC transgender women, and all transgender people continue to confront disproportionate violence, disproportionate violence, discrimination, and systematic barriers. And whereas, in May two thousand and nineteen, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts passed Bill H. one-one-nine-zero, an act relative to abusive practices to change sexual orientation and gen, and gender identity in minors, which bans harmful and abusive conversion therapy practices. And whereas, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts passed Chapter one-twenty-seven of the Acts of twenty-twenty-two, an act expanding protection for reproductive and gender-affirming care, which protects individuals seeking sanctuary from out-of-state persecution and explicitly prohibits law enforcement agencies from knowingly making or participating in the arrest or extradition of an individual pursuant to an out-of-state arrest warrant based on another state's law against receiving gender-affirming healthcare in Massachusetts. And whereas, TNGDI people live and work in East Hampton and contribute to our community in unique and valuable ways that deserve to be acknowledged, honored, and celebrated. And whereas, medical and mental health providers providing gender-affirming care or otherwise serving the TNGDI community who reside and/or have offices or facilities in East Hampton should be protected from attempts to impose criminal punishment, civil liability, administrative penalties, or professional sanctions based on the laws of other states when gender-affirming healthcare is lawful in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and adheres to clinically accepted standards for good professional practice. And whereas, due to the nationwide surge of anti-transgender legislation, increasing numbers of TNGDI people and their families, many of whom are working class and/or are in lower income bracket, brackets, are relocating to Massachusetts, including East Hampton, because our state is accepting of them and so we can ac, and so they can access gender-affirming care and other basic human and civil rights. And whereas, East Hampton has a history of adopting ordinances and resolutions that affirm and support the rights of TNGDI people at the local level, including resolution pertaining to discrimination and intolerance that states in part that the city of East Hampton and its representatives shall not condone or tolerate any form of discrimination on the basis of race, color, religious creed, age, familial status, national origin, immigration status, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity or expression, physical or mental disability, or veteran status passed on January third, twenty eighteen. The resolution in support of yes on twenty eighteen state ballot measure three transgender rights was passed on October third, twenty eighteen. City ordinance, chapter thirteen, article one, welcoming community trust ordinance, which was approved by the city council and the mayor of East Hampton on June tenth, twenty nineteen, and which directs all city departments to build trust and fairness between our local government and its residents, employees, and visitors. And the resolution to support, resolution in support of an act providing gender, providing for gender non-binary designation on state documents and identifications passed on April twenty, twenty twenty-two. And whereas, And whereas, in response to broad-based community support for protecting the basic human rights of its TNGDI members and in keeping with its longstanding values of equality, safety, and dignity for all, East Hampton affirms its commitment to protecting and preserving those rights. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the East Hampton City Council hereby reiterates its commitment to transgender rights and declares itself a welcoming city and a place of safety for our TNGDI community, and as such, shall exercise its power to ensure the equal protection, treatment, and representation of all transgender, non-binary, gender diverse, and intersex persons without discrimination. Therefore, be it resolved that this council recognizes the importance of gender-affirming healthcare as a matter of health, privacy, and equality, and to ensure to the greatest extent permitted by law that those rights are upheld for all residents and visitors within the City of East Hampton. And therefore, be it resolved, the East Hampton City Council hereby maintains it should be the policy of the city that no city resources, including but not limited to time spent by employees, officers, contractors, or subcontractors while on duty, or the use of city property, shall be utilized for detaining purposes for solely seeking or providing gender-affirming care, including gender-affirmation surgery or gender hormone therapy. And therefore, be it resolved, the East Hampton City Council hereby maintains it should be the policy of the city that no city resources shall be utilized for cooperating with or providing information or records to any individual or out-of-state agency or department regarding the provision of lawful gender-affirming healthcare or gender-affirming mental healthcare performed in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And therefore, be it resolved that all public spaces in the city, including the Council on Aging, the East Hampton Community Center, the public spaces under the Department of Parks and Recreation, public safety, public works, and public schools, be deemed as welcoming, equitable, and safe spaces for members of the TNGDI community. And therefore, be it resolved that the City of East Hampton protect the legal rights and safety of all health and mental health care providers, public school teachers, and library workers who serve the TNDGI community. And therefore, be it resolved that the East Hampton City Council calls on the mayor to create an advisory committee by August 1, 2025, comprised of individuals from the TNGDI community for the purpose of safeguarding said community from ongoing and future anti-trans legislation as it develops. And therefore, be it further resolved that the East Hampton City Council affirms that East Hampton is a community that honors diversity and diverse interests and aspires to be free of prejudice, bigotry, and hate. And the clerk of the City Council shall send a copy of this resolution to State Senator John Vellis, State Representative Omar Gomez, East Hampton Mayor Nicola Chappell, East Hampton Interim Superintendent Maureen Beniada, members of the East Hampton School Committee, East Hampton Police Chief Chad Alexander, East Hampton Director of Public Health Ryan Griffin, East Hampton Director of Parks and Recreation John Mason, East Hampton DPW Director Greg Nuttman, East Hampton Library Director Katia Shapiro, Director of the East Hampton Council on Aging Cynthia Terrell, Executive Director of the East Hampton Community Center Robyn Bolecki, President and Chief Operating Officer of Cooley Dickinson Hospital, Dr. Kevin Whitney, Trans Health CEO Joe Irwin, and Tapestry CEO Craig Anderson.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Counsel Riley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I apologize, I'm a really ugly crier. And there's something to be said about being at this stage in my life, to sit next to someone like Counselor Smith, who is a friend and a colleague and is exactly who I needed when I was a kid. And to be able to sit here next to you and to hear you say these things and to speak it into record, I wasn't just a city councilor listening to you right now. I was also that little kid that needed someone like you. And I'm just so happy that we're peers and we get to share in this together. So thank you for that. So, you know, first I just wanted to say how happy that I am to have all of you in attendance tonight. I have so much love and affection for all my queer siblings. You've been gracious and supportive and engaged in the policy process tonight. And I hope that this isn't the last time that I see you all in City Hall. Also, my council members know that I'm a very emotional person. So for those of you that I've not met before, I have a lot of feelings. And I'm gonna get through this the best that I can. So with that being said, hi, everyone. I'm Brad Riley. I use he/him and they/them pronouns. And in addition to being a city councilor, I'm the Vice Chair of Tapestry Health. I want to speak from the heart tonight, not just as a councilor, but as a human who knows what fear can do to a person. I remember what it felt like growing up as a queer kid in a world that didn't seem to want me in it. Fear shaped everything. I was afraid to go to bars because I didn't know if someone might follow me out. I was afraid of pickup trucks slowing down on quiet roads, afraid of being at the wrong party around the wrong people. I avoided dark streets. I changed my clothes. I changed the tone of my voice and walked faster if I felt like I was being watched. And I did what so many queer people do. I became a master at shrinking myself down just enough to feel invisible, but never enough that I completely disappeared. And it's really hard for someone who hasn't experienced that to describe what that does to you over time. And it's even harder when the government joins in, not just with a silence in policy, but with laws that are meant to make you feel small, unsafe, and alone. That's the world that I came of age in, and it's the world that I still live in, and it's the world that transgender people are living in today. Across this country, states are passing laws that target trans and queer people, especially our youth. They're banning gender-affirming care, criminalizing doctors and families, erasing history from our school books, and trying to legislate people out of existence by denying them access to healthcare, housing, public spaces, and even something as basic as having to go to the bathroom. To my fellow counselors who don't know what that is and doesn't know what it feels like, I want to ask you something. Have you ever had to go to the bathroom? One of those situations where you've, quote, "had too much coffee and you can't wait" situations? And you realize you don't know where the closest bathroom is? But then imagine that there is a bathroom nearby and you're not allowed to use it. Not because it's out of order, but because the law says that your existence makes other people uncomfortable. Or have you ever had to bring your child to the emergency room and prayed that the doctors would know what to do without judgment and without delay? Now imagine being the parent of a trans teenager who needs help and the law won't let doctors treat them. Not because the treatment is untested, but because lawmakers don't think that your child's needs are real. Or have you ever filled out a job application and hesitated, even just for a second, because you're worried that they might not accept someone like you? Imagine the hesitation stretching into a daily fear that you'll lose your job, you'll lose your housing, your physical safety, just because of the way that you were born. These are not abstract hypotheticals. They're the lived realities of trans and queer people across America right now. Not in the 1950s, not in some faraway country, right here, and in states that are just a few hours' drive away from us. So that's why this resolution matters. It's not just a symbolic gesture. It's a declaration that East Hampton is not going to join in that cruelty. That here, we will lead with care and not control. As someone who made it through a very lonely childhood to become a city councilor, I don't take this platform for granted. I see it as a chance to do what so many could not do for me when I was younger: to speak up, to pay it forward, to say to anyone who feels afraid to live fully and freely that the government of East Hampton will not hurt you. You are seen. You're so beautiful, and you're welcome here. And if you ever feel alone, the doors of Pace and Avenue are always open to you. We are the little city with a big heart. And I know that we say that a lot. We actually heard it a lot here tonight. But it's true. I've seen this community disagree on things, passionately and sometimes even fiercely. But I've also seen us return to something deeper: a kind of dignity in the way that we treat each other and an understanding that people are more important than politics. We may not all understand what it means to be transgender or queer, but we all know what it means to feel safe, to be treated with decency, and to be allowed to live our lives in peace. So tonight, I ask us to extend the promise of East Hampton to those who need it most. Let this resolution be our reminder to ourselves and to the world that in East Hampton, we do not meet fear with more fear. We will meet it with love, with protection, with a steady hand and an open heart. Let's be the kind of city where trans and queer people do not have to look over their shoulder to shrink themselves down and to wonder if their government is against them. Let's be the kind of city that says with clarity and compassion that you belong here. Thank you, and to everyone, happy pride.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank the counselors that brought this forward. I just wanted to coattail on something I heard earlier that I didn't want to get lost. When we did say the Pledge of Allegiance, somebody referenced that, you know, liberty and justice for all. Whether you agree or disagree with the way somebody lives their life, all means all. Go ahead, say it.
Any other counselors?
You're all incredibly patient, and I appreciate your being here tonight. I hope that we're able to help everyone understand better situations that they may not experience in life that are not part of their own lives. That helps us to become a community, a more understanding community, a more open community, a community that shares with one another and trusts. We must trust one another. I pledge at each meeting, you may not hear it, when the Pledge of Allegiance is said, with liberty and justice for all, I add, and I will do my best today in that regard. It would be unfair to anyone to allow people to be in a body that doesn't feel right. We must love one another, have inclusion, provide the safety that we've been talking about. Everyone deserves to feel like themselves. And we will help you do that.
Any other counselors? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or no's? Motion passes.
I move for a two-minute recess. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we're in recess. You don't have to stay anymore if you don't want to. But you have two minutes. If you are gonna stay and talk, which is welcome, just please, if you could go down the stairs and do it so we can... We still have a full agenda. Our time is up. If we could take our way back. And if you're still up here, we're about to start, so you might want to run away. You're talking to us or that? If you need to, Counselor Coniff, you put in your time. You did such a good job. You're a trooper, and we appreciate you.
Well, yeah, I was doing my exercises under the table.
Oh, all righty, so...
I retained three more people than I thought we would.
So we're gonna start as soon as Counselor Smith sits down, and we will get this going. Okay. So the next thing that we have on the agenda is communications from boards and commissions. We have a letter from the Council on Aging Director regarding the change of hours. And I don't know if anybody wants to speak on that. But it was... Yeah, that's right. I noticed. I don't know if you...
Are you too tired?
I am, actually. Thanks for asking.
Do you want me to read it?
No, you don't have to read the whole thing. You can just give us the bridge version.
Yeah. Let's see. So just for people who don't know, the Council on Aging typically has been open from 8 to 4 most days for many years. Many senior centers are not open to the public for the full hours that their staff work so they can do administrative work and backup housework. And in our case, where our main room, where almost everything happens, every staff person except me has no ceiling and barely any walls. So everything that happens, happens while everybody is present. And then what we have noticed over time is that business really slows down unless you're in a specific class you've signed up for or you're out on a field trip or playing bocce or something at the park pretty much after 3:00, 3:15. But one or two people might come in a few times a week between then, and you're really trying to wrap stuff up, return calls to people who need rides, whatever. So we also have staff who, just to finish up that last conversation, that last call, you know, are routinely late leaving, and we really can't have that. Comp time has limits. So we've talked about this for a very long time. And what we've decided to do is, rather than say have a half-day on Fridays or something like that, like we pride ourselves on being open on Fridays, we wanted to just slice off the tiniest bit of each day possible to make more time for administrative work. And we will still have classes, field trips, outreach appointments, the work that I do going on. So 8 to 3:30 will be the new hours. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't think so. Thank you so much.
And it's not something that anybody has to vote on. As far as I understand it, it's a policy that I can make, but I would never do that without consulting with our executive branch, our Council on Aging Board, and letting you folks know.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Okay. Do any other counselors have any announcements they would like to make? It looks like... Are you gonna do the same one I am?
Well, probably. I'd rather read the same.
JP, are you gonna do the same one?
I don't know.
Is it the park?
Yes.
It was Daily Field.
Yes, it was.
Hundredth anniversary.
Hundredth anniversary this weekend, and June 17, for release on the 21st, from 12 to 5 at Daily Field. Come and join in the festivities. There'll be inflatables, classic field games, baseball games, or ballgames, rather. East Hampton Fire Department ladder truck appearance, live music at 3 o'clock, and food trucks on site. And please feel free to add any more.
You said it all. Stolen with thunder.
But I rolled my hand bravely.
and the history that they have experienced, and what they have endured to make significant contributions to the culture and life of our community and this country and to the world, really, but just want to acknowledge that celebration tomorrow.
Okay, thanks for that. And I don't have any other communications other than the hundredth anniversary mayor communications. Do you have anything for us tonight? We have, we did get your memo, so if you don't, if you don't want to explain it, so we did get, and after everybody saw the memo.
Yeah.
And, okay. Thanks. And let's go to committees. Finance, Counsel Peake.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Finance, obviously did all this stuff. The only thing that is not there is, we did meet to discuss a request from the Police Department for the creation of a donation account supporting mindfulness and meditation in the Police and Fire Departments. I suppose they, somebody's offered to donate money for them, but there is not a donation account to receive that money. I don't see why we'd turn it down. And so I would make a motion to create a donation account supporting mindfulness and meditation for the Police and Fire Departments.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Noes, tensions, or noes? Motion passes.
This concludes.
Okay, thank you. And Public Safety, Counsel Terrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have not met since our last meeting. We do have a scheduled meeting on Tuesday, June 24th at 5:00 PM, hopefully in Conference Room 1. I have not checked the meeting yet, but I'm hoping it'll be Conference Room 1. This concludes.
Would you like to?
An extension?
No, you don't need an extension, but let's, let's move the request from the Director of Public Works, which is gonna be accompanied by my formal request, so let's just move it into Public Safety for a four-way stop.
Perfect. So to make a motion to move the request from Director of Public Works to convert a Loudville Road, West Street, Glendale Street, and Palm and Meadow Road to an all-way stop control to Public Safety.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, sounds good.
This concludes.
That's your new business, so we're good. Okay, let me see, well, that brings me to Appointments. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have not met since our last meeting, since we had no new business. However, I have some new business now, and so in the form of a motion, I would like to move the following four mayoral appointments to the, to Appointment Subcommittee. Leslie Button for the Board of Registars within the term expiration of 12/31/25. Deb Peavy, Council on Aging, 12/31/25. Elizabeth CJ Muddy, East Hampton Cultural Council, 6/3/2028. And Wendy Taylor Jordan, Planning Board, 12/31/25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions or noes? Motion passes.
And, oh, I was just gonna say, the only other business I have is that I would like to put an extension on the ongoing agenda item request for Board and Committee vacancy review and recruitment. Can I get a 60-day extension on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Motion passes.
And that concludes.
Thank you. Ordinance, Counsel Denham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Boy, have we been meeting. And I, I say that with somewhat sense of humor, but, sense of humor, but I, I do just want to acknowledge the other committee members for the amount of time that we've been putting into these items. So I just, I just want to acknowledge that we've, we've met twice a month, sometimes three times a month, to be able to kind of move through these things rather quickly. But since our last meeting on June 9th and June 10th, we talked about the, I think, short-term rental ordinance. We've been moving through that, we've gotten some, we've gotten pretty far on it, we've gotten some, I think, clarifications on some things, we've gotten a couple more questions, but it's kind of narrowing itself down, so that's moving along, and so hopefully we'll be able to present something to council in the near, near-ish, nearer future. We also met to talk about the review of the Affordable and Fair Housing Partnership zoning ordinance recommendations, and at our last meeting, we also met with the Aquifer Protection Committee, well, the Chair, and because there was a lot of expressed concern about what the recommendations, what in fact they may have on the Aquifer, and so at that meeting, we basically put those two committees together for them to be able to come together and have some conversation. I know that the Aquifer Protection Committee is also working on some recommendations as well, so it's an opportunity for them to kind of come together and talk about those things, which I think would make the work of the planning board, when it gets to them, a lot more, hopefully, is a simpler kind of process. And those are really the two things that we've been working on, are still waiting on information regarding the moratorium on sewer sludge and the other pieces we've, those have just, unfortunately, just taken a backseat just because of the number of things that we have going on. I don't have anything to increase the time, but we do have an item that we need to move Sections 2 definitions to amend 2.1, and Sections 4 use regulations to amend Table 5-1. Forming a motion, I'd like to move that to the committee.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any noes or abstentions? Motion passes.
And that's everything our committee has to offer, Counsel, this evening.
Okay, thank you. And Property, Counsel Peake.
Thank you, Mr. President. Property met last week to discuss a, a conservation restriction from Kestrel Land Trust for the property on Main Street, forgive me, 389 Main Street.
35.
381, 385 Main Street. So we have a representative from, from Kestrel here if people have questions, but basically, I think most of you remember when this project started moving forward, the idea is that a portion of the project is going to be affordable housing developed by agricole community builders, the other is going to be property maintained as conservation by Kestrel, and essentially those two timelines are slightly different, and so we are in a position to move ahead with the conservation stuff. There's no reason to believe that they will not be moving ahead with the housing stuff, it's just taking longer, and for various reasons, it makes a lot of sense for this conservation restriction to happen this fiscal year, which is why we need to vote on it today. So if there's any specific questions, we've had, our councilroom has been nice enough to sit through the last four and a half hours of meetings, so you could go ahead and ask away, but otherwise, I have a motion ready to go.
Does anybody have any questions? Motion away.
All right, I will make a motion to approve the foregoing conservation restriction from Kestrel Land Trust Incorporated to Massachusetts Autobahn Society Incorporated and the City of East Hampton, acting by and through its Conservation Commission in the public interest pursuant to Section 32 of Chapter 184 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any against or abstentions? Motion passes.
All right, and we have some other stuff that we're gonna work on next fiscal year that we've been saying we're not gonna touch until the budget's done, but now the budget's done, so.
Sounds good. Okay, Rules and Government Relations, Counsel Kuzinski.
Regarding the Homeworld Charter Amendment request, we have received some new information from the attorney, and we'll be calling a meeting shortly on that matter, and stay tuned, because we hope to have that, get that back to you folks soon in the next fiscal year.
Okay.
That concludes.
Thank you. And we don't have any old business, we've taken care of all new business. I would entertain a motion for adjournment. We have a motion and a second. Do not leave without signing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nobody's against that. Thank you so much.